Good evening Placerville. It is a privilege to welcome each of you to Town Hall this evening. And those of you who are watching from home, welcome. It's August 28th, 2018, and this is a Placerville City Council meeting. And before I invite you to stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to open this meeting this evening, this meeting a little different today. I'd like to open this City Council meeting in honor of Senator John McCain, who passed this week. And no matter what your political persuasion, whether you're Republican or Democrat or Libertarian or Green Party, Purple Party, Red Party, I think Senator McCain rose above all of those labels and was a true statesman and patriot that loved America and put service above self. And I had the great privilege of serving as an alternate delegate at the National Convention when he was a candidate for president. And I think one of the most special occasions were the times that the California delegation gathered in small gatherings with members of his family, with members of the military that had served with him. And we heard firsthand accounts of the kind of man that he was and the kind of hero that he was in service to our nation. And, you know, I think back to the time when, as a prisoner of war in Vietnam, after years of torture and untoward deprivation, he was offered the occasion to go home because of his privilege and his family's military background. And he knew it was a pawn, a political pawn. And he said, "No, I'll stay with my men." And I think how many of us would have the courage to stay in that situation in service to the country that he so loved? So, I'd like to offer a moment of silence.
I'm going to just offer one more thing too. You know, my late husband Carl did a lot of work with the Vietnam veterans and the POWs. And he worked with the POWs wives. And we had a lot of those ladies come up and attend meetings and stuff. And we heard about John all the time. I mean, you know, he was discussed and certainly a lot of admiration and contributed to that whole thing. So, gave us hope.
Yeah, that's wonderful.
But I agree with you wholeheartedly. He was a wonderful man.
Amazing. So let's have a moment of silence, please, in honor of John McCain. Thank you. And with that, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May we have the roll call, please, Regina?
Vice Mayor Acuna.
Here.
Councilmember Borelli.
Here.
Councilmember Clarici.
Here.
Mayor Thomas.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And with that, we are on under announcements and presentations to the public. And I'd like to start on that. Number one, there is another update on the Western Placerville interchange on our city's website. It's number 14. So if you're curious to what's going on there, check out the city's website. And I love this fun fact, that did you know that the project will include extensive landscaping, including 900 native plants? So, as we look at the barren earth there, that's really nice to know, that 900 native plants are going to be a part of that extensive landscaping. And the new curb gutter sidewalks look amazing on that. So, it's nice to see that project moving forward. And speaking of street projects, I announced this at the last City Council meeting, but it was at the end when no one was here. So with that, we have cause to celebrate another road project. So, our city engineer Rebecca Neves, would you like to tell what award we recently won?
Thank you, Mayor Thomas. The Canal Street repaving project won APWA, which is American Public Works Association, Project of the Year Award for transportation projects under 200,000 and, or excuse me, under population of two, excuse me, contract value of 200,000, population under 75,000. So we were very honored to receive that award. And we were very thrilled to have partnered with the high school and the school district on that project.
It was fantastic to see that patch of pavement get done in time for the school year. And it's not done. The full Canal Street project will be about $5.4 million, I think. And that's coming later. But at least we got the road shored up in time for school. And it's a, that was a, congratulations on the award. That was terrific. And this next announcement, I am so happy to make, so darn excited about this. Last Council meeting, two weeks ago, we announced that the city had just gotten word from Caltrans that the Mosquito Road Bridge project would be moving into Phase Two in September. And what that would entail was the narrowing of, the closure of lanes in both directions on Highway 50 at the Mosquito Road Broadway mosquito off-ramps. And those two lanes, it would be down to two lanes, one each way, for 12 days, 24 hours a day, in the end of September. So that's the middle of Apple Hill season, that's the height of fire season. And then after the Council meeting, we looked at our calendars and said, "Oh geez, it's also Oktoberfest," where Main Street will be closed that Saturday. And so we said, "This can't happen." And so after the Council meeting, our city staff, all the department heads got diligent and started their communications with Caltrans separately. Supervisor Verkamp and myself, we reached out to our legislators and spoke with Senator Gaines's office, as well as Assemblyman Bigelow's office. Vice Mayor Acuna was diligent and working with our staff and all of us to kind of think about and to come up with possible solutions. And all of our communications and collaborations resulted in a high-powered powell yesterday afternoon, where, oh, let me back up here. We also found out that our sister agencies had not been notified of this potential road, this road closure that was imminent. And what we're talking about is the California Highway Patrol did not know about it. The Sheriff's Department didn't know about it. The El Dorado County Fire and CAL FIRE did not know about this. And our Police Department was instrumental in informing those agencies. And so yesterday, all those agencies met with our city staff, department heads, our Police Department, Fire Department, CAL FIRE, I mean, all, everyone was at the table, including the Deputy Director of Caltrans for Construction, the Project Manager for this project, and two traffic engineers for Caltrans. And we met for an hour and a half here in Town Hall. And each agency was able to talk about their extreme fears if, you know, Highway 50 was constrained with, and I think our traffic count say that during Apple Hill season, traffic count goes up to 70,000 cars a day on Highway 50. I'm sorry, what's that? Please go ahead.
Per weekend.
Oh, per weekend, okay, thank you. Well, 70,000 cars per weekend, that's a lot of cars going through Highway 50 if that's blocked up, which would then impact all of our neighborhood streets, create gridlock in our city, and the ability for fire, for police, for emergency personnel, to not only navigate our city streets, but also to get critical safety services up and down Highway 50 would come to a stop. And Caltrans was extremely respectful, and they heard our strong concerns about our ability to keep our city safe during that time. One of their solutions was, "Okay, we'll start messaging very strongly in the Bay Area and west of Sacramento that essentially Highway 50 is closed during those 12 days. Essentially, don't come through Placerville and take alternate routes anywhere you're going." And we said, "You know, that's not good enough. So we need to find another solution." So after hearing our concerns, brainstorming on solutions, we got word today from Caltrans that this Mosquito Road Bridge project will be buttoned up in the next, you know, couple weeks. They'll, there's a four-inch dip in the pavement. They're going to just temporarily pave that over. They're going to open up both on-ramps, and they'll be back in the spring to finish the project. So I just take my hat off to Caltrans, who's been incredible collaborative partner, our city staff, our legislators, all of our agencies, for coming up with a solution that works for our community. And so that was a real win. So, and, you know, Vice Mayor Acuna, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. You've done an excellent job outlining what happened. The impact from this, and I had this verified yesterday by one of the Caltrans traffic numbers expert, was their expected travel time through Placerville during this project is one hour. So if you are trying to go east or west through Mosquito, to get across the Mosquito Road Bridge on Highway 50, they anticipate that that trip during this project is going to take you one hour. I would just like to echo my thanks to all of the agencies that were in a big roundtable here yesterday afternoon, as outlined by our mayor, and their honesty and their passion for this community and the information that they alone, as the experts, from the Sheriff's Department, the two representatives from CAL FIRE, Chief Michael Hardy from El Dorado County Fire, the area commander of the Highway Patrol was also there, as well as Commander Wren, representing our Police Department, our city engineering staff was there. All of us sitting with Caltrans, who had been working on this project for two years, we had known about it for about a total of one week in this community. So it was very satisfying to have all of the representatives work in a collaborative effort. We actually brought a series of recommendations to the table yesterday, our preferred fixes that recognized that this project simply could not happen during Apple Hill. And even worse, it could not happen during fire season and impacting travel times through our city. So, we were very successful, and it was very great that we were able to work collaboratively. But we have only delayed this project. This project will be back in the spring. This bridge does desperately need to be repaired. So we hope to start meeting with the same people in early January so that we can begin to work out acceptable solutions to how they can get this project done. But for the moment, it was a highlight, I think, of my political activities to go in against an organization like Caltrans, who has very rigid rules and regulations, very rigid construction schedules and standards. And it was very rewarding to have them represented by a group of people that listened to bona fide concerns from community leaders and community organizations, and they reacted appropriately. So thank you very much to them.
Absolutely. Do you want to finish, Council comments?
Yeah, I would, on a happy note, Goldbug Park volunteers are going to be doing their last fundraiser for the year on Saturday, this coming Saturday during the Labor Day weekend. It would be, what, September 1st? And from 10:00 AM to 3:45 in the afternoon, they're going to have the Priest Mine open, which is only open two or three times a year. It is a $4 donation for anyone that would like to go through. I believe the last time they had it open was Memorial Day weekend, and they had about 900 people visit. So, all of the other exhibits will be open, the blacksmith shop demonstrations. I believe the Georgetown Regulators will be there in costume, doing their Wild West routine as well. So again, that's September 1st, from 10:00 to 4:00 at Goldbug Park.
Thank you. Councilmember Borelli?
I do. Put my glasses on so I can read this. I received this email from Brandon Sanders, who is the Sierra Division Public Affairs for PG&E. It says, "With the 2018 wildfire season upon us, PG&E is convening informational workshops about our community wildfire safety program. As you may already know, in the event of extreme fire danger conditions, it may be necessary for us to temporarily turn off electricity in some areas within your community to protect public safety. We understand how important electric service is to our customers, and we will only consider a public safety power shut-off as a last resort. Please join us at your local workshop to learn more about PG&E's plans and to provide your input." And this is going to be Thursday, September 6th, from 2:00 to 4:00, at the El Dorado County Fair and Event Center, which we call the Organ Room, on Placerville Drive. And I know that I've heard comments from people, their concerns about, you know, this very thing. And this would be a good time for folks that want to learn more about it or have some comments to attend this. Unfortunately, it's the same day as our Transit and Transportation Meeting, so three of us can't go. But I would just encourage folks. And then I also got a notice today that Wendy, your discussion you had with Scott Syphix on Home is going to be on again. This, it's going to be Friday, August 31st, at 7:30.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Appreciate the updates. Councilmember Clarici?
Thank you. I have a couple of brief things. One's a fun thing. My Saturday mornings are usually very busy this time of year, and I'm not usually in town. But my schedule of things made it possible for me to finally go and walk through our farmer's market, which I haven't done since it was moved. And it was delightful at the creek.
Were you able to get into town?
Well, I, yeah, well, no. It was like 9:30.
It was crowded that day.
Oh, yeah. No, it was 9:30, and it was fine.
Oh, okay.
But I just want to say, I just, it's so, I'm so glad that the city was able to help the coal wells realize their dream that's been going on for 10 or 11 years now, moving over there and finally having the farmer's market on that side of the creek. So, and it was great because I was able to park in a parking lot. I thought that was really cool. The other thing's more serious. I went, I had the honor of going to a ceremony for Staff Sergeant Sky Moat, a local young man who lost his life in Afghanistan or Iraq. I was, I didn't take enough notes, and I want to apologize for that. But he's a local kid, taken in battle. Couple of things that I didn't realize, and I should have known. One is that he won the Navy Cross, which is one step below a Medal of Honor. And that's a pretty high, that's a pretty high honor. And when you read the citation about what he did, it was remarkable, as some humans are able to raise themselves to that level of heroism. It's humbling to realize that in our more pedestrian lives. His father was there, Russell was there. He's a teacher, he was a teacher at Marina School, I believe he may still be. And they're prepared, the installation was to prepare for a, oh, I'm losing the word, but they'll have a display that will have his uniform, some pictures of him, some of his correspondence, a copy of the citation that includes for the Navy Cross, and some other items. And so it was very nice. It was American Legion and that post there, and the Veterans of Foreign Wars and those groups that were there. And it was just an honor to be there, and...
Didn't they name the?
They named the overcrossing, yeah.
No, but the, at the Legion, I thought they were going to name their post after him.
Right, that's what, that's what the installation was for, was to name the post after Staff Sergeant.
Yeah, I'm sorry I missed that. I wasn't able to go.
Anyway, anyway, so it was just all very humbling, but very nice too. So I just want to say that I attended that. It was kind of funny. They said, "Well, you know, it's, we weren't having, we weren't having any of the politicians speak." And I said, "That's okay. That's okay." I love to talk, but not under these circumstances. So, the honor was his and his family. And even after all these years, his father became very emotional during the ceremony. And so we should all just keep that in mind when we hear about these young men and women going off on these tours of duty. There are real families, real lives, real consequences to this sort of thing. And we should all be thankful that there's people that are willing to do that on our behalf. So, anyway, that was what I wanted to say.
Thank you so much for representing the city at that important installation. All right. With that, we're on item four, closed session report. Is there any reportable action, John?
There was not, Mayor Thomas. No reportable action as a result of the closed session tonight.
All right, thank you. Ceremonial matters. I have a proclamation.
You're going to adopt the agenda?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, I do want to adopt the agenda. Does any?
I'll move the agenda.
Second.
All right, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Agenda is adopted. With that, move on to ceremonial manners. And I understand we have a Mr. Montgomery in the, yes, good evening, I remember you from last time we did this, welcome to City Council. And with that, I have a proclamation for you. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but we'll read highlights of it, because it's an important, important issue, certainly. So a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Placerville declaring September 2018 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas prostate cancer is the most frequently diagnosed cancer in men and the second leading cause of cancer deaths in men. And whereas the American Cancer Society estimates there will be 164,690 new cases of prostate cancer in the U.S. in 2018, resulting in an estimated 29,430 deaths. And whereas it is estimated 15,190 men in California will be diagnosed with prostate cancer this year, and it is estimated 3,490 California men will die from this disease. And whereas early prostate cancer usually has no symptoms and studies suggest strong familiar predisposition may be responsible for 5% to 10% of the disease cases. And whereas the five-year survival rate approaches 100% when prostate cancer is diagnosed and treated early, but drops to 30% when it spreads to other parts of the body. And whereas the American Cancer Society recommends that men should have the opportunity to make an informed decision about whether to be tested for prostate cancer based on their personal values and preferences. And whereas the City of Placerville joins communities across our nation to increase the awareness about the importance for men to make an informed decision with their health care provider about early detection and testing for prostate cancer. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Wendy Thomas, Mayor of the City of Placerville, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2018 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month, and I do commend this observance to all citizens. So, Mr. Montgomery, would you like to come and share a few words perhaps? Welcome, we're glad you're here.
Thank you. I think the whereas covers almost everything I might want to say. I'd like to thank you, Madam Mayor, and City Council and the staff for participating in this for, I guess this is my fifth year doing it here. And I'd like to, special thanks to Regina and Susan in the past, who've been very nice and cooperative and prepared the proclamation. I think it's above and beyond the call of duty, shall we say. Anyhow, I'm a 20-year survivor, and I'm constantly pushing people, the doctors in particular, because they don't like to hear from me, but to get tested. And it's a very simple blood test, one that when somebody does their annual physical, it's out of one of the vials they can do this test. And it's not the world's greatest thing, but it's a flag. And I try to recommend everybody, get tested, you know, let's just say 40, 45, create a benchmark, do it every year thereafter, kind of see how it goes. And then have the discussion with your doctor or people who have been there, done that. I've been volunteering with UC Davis for about 10 years as what we call a peer navigator. So when people are diagnosed, they're referred to us, yes or no, they don't, it's not an obligation. At times, I even go to their doctor's appointments with them, just so they have somebody else to take notes if they don't have the girlfriend, the wife, or whatever. Most men don't hear maybe 10% of what the doctor says. So they need to kind of, kind of get slapped upside the head and said, "Listen, these are your questions, these are your comments, what have you." And I chair, felicitate, whatever you want to call it, the Cameron Park Support Group. And it's the same thing, where we have guys that have been through it, and they feed it back, and they're generous enough to spend their time, even though they've been through treatment, to give back to the guys who are coming down the road. And it's like, hey, you didn't get a death sentence. You need to take charge, have a good attitude, and do something with this whole thing. So, anyhow, thanks again, and I appreciate it very much for doing the proclamation and allowing me to get up here and babble a little bit about, talk to your doctor, get tested, do your thing.
Thank you for your advocacy on behalf of our community. And I will come down and present the proclamation to you. All right, we are now at the public comment portion of our evening. And this portion is reserved for you to bring forward any, anything you want to discuss that is not on our agenda this evening. And we ask that when you come forward, to state your name for the record. And speakers have three minutes. And we ask that you basically follow the golden rule, do unto others as you would do unto yourself. And don't say anything you don't want to have said against about you. So, with that, the time is yours, and public comment is open. Come on down. Good evening.
Hi. My name's Kelly Rogers. I've lived here my entire life. I also own the skateboard shop here at the other end of town. And I'm here kind of on behalf of myself and a lot of other people, actually, to kind of ask some questions on this crisis of homeless and vagrancy in this town. I've lived here, like I said, my entire life. I've never seen it like this. Do you have business owners that are feeling threatened? Like, I personally deal with it constantly, like daily. And the reason I don't call PD is because I'm pretty sure they're inundated with it as well. But I also ask some questions on like, what is the policy protocol or like a plan going forward to deal with this? You know, I know it's statewide, it's a big issue, but there are people literally living in the creek. I could show you a video today that is just the most disgusting video you would ever see, okay? You have people living in the creek, leaving trash in the creek, which is a waterway, which eventually flows to Weber Creek, which eventually flows into the South Fork. So, to me, I don't, I hear a lot of great things going on in the community, I guess, about projects and whatnot. But as someone who's lived here my entire life, and I've seen so much and been through the best and worst times of my life, I feel like the foundation of our very community is being eroded, when you have people living in the creek, on drugs, wandering around like zombies. And it's, and you have people who are threatened, and not everyone's going to be willing to step up here and speak up. But I am, right? You know, I've advocated for the skate park a lot, I'm used to this kind of stuff. And I'm not going to just complain about it. So what I'm trying to figure out is like, what's the plan? Who, is there a plan? Because let's get a plan. And I've literally had to almost physically remove people from my business, and calling 911 is not going to be fast enough. I know the guy across the street was broken into, he's had numerous tweakers hanging around. It's just, we're inundated. The flower shop owner, she's had someone in her shop the other day. The girls at the Coffee Depot are telling me that they're feeling threatened. And I'm kind of at the end of my rope here, because I've had my business for four years. And in those four years, just like I said, it's a daily occurrence. And if you go, you know, all of you should get some rubber boots on, let's go walk down the creek and see just exactly how disgusting it is. And it's not just that, there's trash everywhere throughout this town. Now, I pick up trash, so I'm going to walk the walk, right? I'm not going to sit up here and tell you like what I think you need to do, because I already know what I'm willing to do. But as community as a whole, like, what's the plan? Like, are we just going to sit and watch this happen? Are we going to enforce this? How are we going to keep people, business owners especially, who drive this community? How are you going to keep them from feeling safe, or to make them feel safe when they're not feeling safe? These are my questions, you know?
All right. Thank you so much. When public comment's done, we'll, we'll have some comments on that. Thank you so much, Kelly. Really appreciate your comments. Anyone else like to come forward tonight? Good evening, Mac.
Hi, my name's Mac. I had a rather rude afternoon. At noon, a large contingent of sheriffs and police arrived across the road from me and did a raid with guns drawn, et cetera, et cetera. And it kind of started the area, which is, I live in the historic district, talking about the methamphetamine problem in Placerville, which is extreme at the moment. And part of the problem, which I don't know whether we get a commission together that kind of studies ways to handle this, but there's a number of landlords in the historic district who are actually evicting some longtime tenants to bring in, I guess, higher paying tenants. But these tenants are essentially drug dealers. So after this raid today, when they took away four or five people, there were more than 30 people arrived for the rest of the afternoon to pick up various pieces and parts and whatever. And as I came to the meeting tonight, I saw an awful lot of those people on the trail. So this is an intersection of our homelessness problem and the methamphetamine problem. And it frustrates me that we spent so much time talking about cannabis dispensary for medical marijuana, when we have a real, real issue. I mean, two weeks ago, my partner was propositioned for prostitution on the trail going to the bus stop. I go around the town, because I do parking enforcement, and, and I see a lot of what's happening at the moment. We have people moving into town that have, are making a lot of money off this, this trade. And I don't know how we go about talking about it, how we go about getting a commission together, what we can do to, but we need to nip it now. It's, it's going to be crucial. And especially if the historic district gets taken over by essentially tweakers going all night long. I mean, there's activity on Bedford and Spring all night long. I don't know, I guess most of the people here don't live in that part of town, but it's, it's really a big deal. And it's going to spill over into other aspects of the community. it's, it's really a big deal, and it's going to spill over into other aspects of the community, in my opinion. That's it.
Thank you, Mac, really appreciate your comments. Good evening.
My name is Jim Von Tellrop, I live at 1733 Country Club Drive, and I moved to Placerville 16 years ago from the Bay Area. Just to give an indication of how much I like this community, I work for a hardwood salma company out of Quebec, and we sell upper grade hardwoods for furniture, caps and flooring, and I sell for them out on the West Coast. So within the first year when I lived here, I drove down to El Dorado High School and didn't go to the office, I looked for the silo and went back and introduced myself to the instructor and told him who I was and what I did. And he says, well, you don't understand. He says, I buy from all these distributors in Sacramento. And I says, no, you don't understand. I said, those are all my customers. I'm here to see what lumber you, you use, and I'll get it donated. And the light went on, and we just recently had our 15th annual fundraiser for the woodworking programs of El Dorado County. So I'm here, and I'm a resident, and I want to be involved. But the purpose here today is with the paving that's going on. 15 years, living on Country Club Drive, the city has not done anything to improve the roads. They're out there now, and I went out and talked to the worker bees, and they're just patching, they don't plan to repave. But yet he told me, well, we're going to repave Airport Road for access to the airport, where that butts up against Country Club Drive. I mean, I'm right across from the old golf course and down from the airport. So my question today is, what are the plans for repaving Country Club Drive? I see, you know, the government's doing Highway 50, but most of the paving projects I see going on in Placerville, I assume by, you know, Public Works, are all on arterials that lead to downtown. So...
Can, can you give your contact information to our city clerk, and I will definitely reach out to you on, on that issue?
Okay. All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Jim, appreciate it. Is there anyone else?
Sue Taylor, I really wasn't going to comment on anything, I just, I thought there was something else on the agenda, and so I thought I'd read through and, but this is becoming an issue. I actually had, I'm part of the Republican Women's, and we had a meeting, our last meeting was to ask, there's more crime, the laws that are being passed support more crime, but it's also getting worse in the city. And having young daughter and other people that work downtown, they are feeling threatened. And it's beginning, it's getting worse and worse. And I never felt like anybody cared. It's like you come here and you kind of get demeaned a lot, so Kelly actually asked me, he brought, he asked me, this is happening, what do I do? I said, bring it, bring it to you, because that's who needs to deal with this problem. And so while we were sitting there, he just gave me this that says, just came over the scanner, a couple having sex behind a business on Main Street. This is getting worse and worse, and you talk about all these wonderful things going on in the city, all the development that you're doing. In the meantime, people on the street are being seriously impacted, and it's really getting to the point where we're wondering, what are we doing? So I agree with what he said tonight about what is the plan? When are you going to start looking at how serious the problem is this becoming? Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Good evening, Mr. Keys.
My name is Terry Keyes, I'm not a resident of Placerville. My wife grew up in El Dorado County, and I'm basically here to introduce myself. There's three of you that I have met very briefly and had very brief conversations with, with the El Dorado County Transportation Commission. This is my first city council meeting, and I'm hoping to get here a little more frequently and perhaps to get to know the ropes a little better. I grew up in Chico, California. I have memories of El Dorado County going back to 1952, where my parents had friends over here, and I remember driving back and forth between here and Tahoe when the other end of the road was still gravel. And to get to the point, I am going to make one point, my primary point here is to say that for most of my 35-year career as a research scientist and program director within the land-grant university system, I was one of 14 principal troubleshooters in areas primarily related to water resources, but other areas having to do with natural resources as well. And I worked across state boundaries primarily in the Great Lakes and North, what's called the North Central Region, the 12-state region that has an economy three times the size of California, and water resources that are 20 times the size of California, and they don't have a lot of the problems that California has because they were insensible enough to not build in a place where you don't, where you don't get any rain for six to seven months out of the year. But in any event, I have a lot of experience and a lot of expertise on working on the relationship between science, engineering, across disciplines, and government interactions. I worked a lot with reconciling the facts of science with law and working with legislative committees on drafting legislation. I've appeared as an expert witness both for and against government agencies, government agency, people very often have a tendency of thinking that people like me, because I'm a government employee, I'm always supposed to be on their side. 40% of the legal actions that I were involved in were against state agencies like California Department of Water Resources, like Caltrans, and so forth, because as I used to tell these folks, my job is to provide research-based information to public policymakers, the general public, and businesses industry. It's not to be on your side because you happen to work for government. Other than that, I will make one final comment about your discussion here with Caltrans, about Caltrans. I have a presentation here that I gave at the board meeting this morning, which I'd like to distribute here today. I have spent the last two years basically breaking the code, which is what you have to do when you're a troubleshooter, and investigating various large agencies like Caltrans. I now know how their flow charts work, I know, I now know, I've pretty much penetrated their website, I know how they operate and think. And I'm the guy that distributed to you hard copy paper copies of the SSTI, I had a, what may have sounded like a rather condescending note at the lead of that about the fact, the single biggest, one of the single biggest problems I've had in dealing with state legislators, congressmen, and other kinds of people who work in government, is they don't read reports. You need to read, you're not only need to read, but you need to study that SSTI report, because the reason you are getting along so well, in this particular instance with Caltrans, is because three years ago, Governor Brown took them to the woodshed. And Caltrans has long been known across this country as one of the more dysfunctional highway transportation agencies in the nation. And all the horn blowing aside, they got good people working in them, but they need to be brought up to snuff. And that particular document gives you the levers that you need to keep their attention. And my one point is, I'm not advocating picking fights with Caltrans, far be it. That's not the way you get things done. Diplomacy is great, but I am encouraging local governments and county governments to be a little more assertive. Know that document, and when you start getting into resistance, realize that there are 44 recommendations that were made in there by some of the leading transportation experts in the country, that Caltrans has systematically been ignoring for years, and they need to be reminded of that, and they need to be reminded that the governor's office is none too happy with them, yet, because a lot of the recommendations that were made in that report have not been implemented at the district level. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. You can give those presentations to our city clerk Regina. Thank you very much. Anyone else? All right. With that, we'll close public comment. Thank you for all your comments, and we appreciate the issues that a lot of folks have brought up about the quality of life issues that they see around town. It's, I mean, that's, that's something that we are aware of and deal with on a daily basis. And I would like to convene a, you know, a, a meeting with our city staff and our police department and maybe members of the council to, to take a look at, at where we go with this. Chief Ortega, do you have any comments tonight about this issue? I don't want to put you on the spot, but I, I know it is a challenge in our community.
I could sit here for probably a couple hours, but I, I'm not going to get into a debate, and I'm happy to provide any information though to the council, and my staff and I are happy to explain our efforts, but as one of the commenters said, it's a much bigger effort than just the city of Placerville. Usually there's collaborative efforts from county and state agencies as well, so.
And, and I believe, you know, the, we often tell folks, call. If they see something, call. Don't be afraid to call the police department.
Yeah, for anybody that thinks that, you know, we don't care on the 911 line, we do care, and we come out for every single call. I, I can't say that we're going to be there in 30 seconds, but I can say that it'll be logged, and we will get there as quickly as we can. And if somebody's in the area, they'll even peel off what they're doing and they'll go handle that. So yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, for explaining, people do need to let us know. That's the only way we're going to know about it.
Right, absolutely.
I mean, if people come and tell us after the fact, I really want to know beforehand.
Yeah, so, so we will be having a further discussion on that.
I think that's a great idea. I, you know, we, we're all hearing these complaints constantly, as, as you alluded to, and it almost appears like we're, nobody's doing anything, and we are. There's a lot being done, and, but it is an overwhelming thing.
It is a real challenge.
And it's just, it's just such a challenge, and...
Madam...
You want to?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Kelly, I go by your shop pretty regularly, and I've seen some very disgusting homeless activity taking place where obviously people have slept along the side of your building. I even saw you out there a couple of months ago trying to help somebody get on with their life early in the morning. But please, call the police department. Chief, if you could make sure that Kelly has the non-emergency number, which unfortunately you could say is the repeat caller number, so that you can get directly into the dispatch, but you got to let us know. Everybody needs to let us know. We have a fully-staffed police department that is just as responsible as they can be as the budget allows for. You have to remember that you are also asking a small-town police department and government to deal with a global issue. Homelessness, drug addiction, meth labs, destruction of neighborhoods, destruction of our creek, those are not something that unfortunately is unique to Placerville or California, these are worldwide issues. We could fill a room with advocates that would tell us to leave every single homeless person that you see alone, that we are violating their rights and they will sue this city. So this is the environment that we are in. So please understand that I think Chief Ortega has our full support. I know we just had National Night Out a couple of weeks ago, and I had the opportunity to get to kind of hang out with what I consider my cops, and their hearts are really into defending this city, defending the quality of life that we still enjoy, and I am damned determined that we will continue to enjoy it, just as long as I have anything to say about it. And as far as the meth problem in the old historic neighborhoods, yes, I am familiar with Bedford Street. It was a huge problem in the Coleman Clay Street area for years, potentially the landlords who didn't give a damn about what went on with their tenants. It was exactly as Mac said, all night long. I had a couple of contacts in that neighborhood, could get just the most disgusting outlines, but unless we had another million dollars to give our police department, we can't go in there and, and do those laser strikes that we'd all like to see and that we see on television. It doesn't work that way. It's good old fashioned, hard cop work. It takes the neighbors to let them know every single time they need to know. And, and I'm totally committed to whatever we can do, but please understand that this is a very sad issue, it's a very global issue, and we will do our best to protect our city. And your input is vital to that, and please come and feel free. I hope no one else would feel demeaned to come forward and let us know that we have a policing issue, we have hauled thousands of dollars of stuff out of the creek down by Perro's Road. Sounds like we have another problem up by Kelly's shop. So this would be probably the second or third creek cleanup that we'll have, be instigating this year. All of those are hits to our budget, there's not any money set aside unfortunately for that, but we will figure out a way to get it done. Thank you for allowing me to speak, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Acuna.
I think to date, we've spent $60,000 on one and $30,000 or $40,000 on another cleanups, and that's just, you know, the tip of the iceberg. We, it just continues, and we get them out and they move back, right back in. And like Mark said, we've just got a limited number of people that can deal with this, and if we could just come up with several million dollars, we'd be sitting pretty.
Part of a larger discussion. Vice Mayor, or Councilmember Acuna.
Not to add on too much, thank you. Remember one thing, folks, we're only part of the equation in this system. There are a lot of groups out there that actually facilitate this behavior, and we don't have any control over them. So you need to think about that as well, because, you know, there's places where they get fed, there's places where they get tents and sleeping bags, and those things are just handed out on a conveyor belt. So we can do a lot of policing, but if there's attractions in this community, we have no control over that. That's all happening outside of the purview of this particular room. So whenever you feel sorry, whenever you do that, just remember, that can be part of the problem as well. So we will be vigilant, as the other council member said, and I don't need to add on to that, we will be vigilant. I was, I had a moment with the homeless population myself on Main Street a couple of days ago, it wasn't very pleasant, it didn't end particularly well for at least a couple of them, and, but it's like sweeping back the tide right now. We have a lot about out-of-town landlords, the recession hit this town hard, and a lot of folks that don't live here and don't give a rip about Placerville bought up property left and right. And they own houses, and they own commercial properties, and they also own all sorts of things, and as long as they're getting some money, they don't care, which means we have to have some resources to go after them from a code enforcement standpoint essentially, and work that angle. But that takes money, that takes lots of money, and we need to figure out a way to bring that to bear. So just remember that. This, this group is only responsible for part of it, and we can do our best, but there's forces in this community that will make this thing happen for a long time to come. Anyway, thank you.
These discussions will continue. All right, thank you. With that, I do, would like to acknowledge we've received written communication from Sue Rodman, always appreciate her input. And with that, we are in the consent calendar. All matters are listed under the consent calendar or considered routine and will be enacted by one motion by roll call vote. Does any member of the council wish to pull an item on the consent calendar or comment on it?
I would like to comment on one.
Please do.
Measure J.
Yes.
Measure J, the force side of the citizens of Placerville, gosh, decades ago now, to have a half a quarter cent sales tax for recruitment and retention of our police force has been invaluable. We would not have the police force that we have even now without this money, and it's absolutely critical to the police force. And so I just want to recognize voters from, well, I was one of them, because I actually lived here back in 1994, '06, something like that. It was a while ago. I remember voting for Measure J, because I thought it was a good idea, and it's a lot, it's like some of the other measures that we've passed over the last few years that make us a self-help city, where we raise our own money to take care of some of these problems, and that's critical. Anyway, thank you.
All right. Does any member of the public wish to comment on any item on the consent calendar? I'll bring it back to council.
I'm moved for approval of consent.
All right, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor Thomas?
Aye, thank you. All right. No items pulled from the consent calendar ordinance. We are on item 11.1, a public hearing, and this public hearing is to approve a variance to allow for a reduction in a required side yard setback, and to find that the project is categorically exempt from CEQA. And Mr. Rivas, would you like to present this item this evening?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. At the June 19th, 2018 meeting of the Planning Commission, they considered the subject variance request. Only four members of the Planning Commission were present at that meeting. The commission's consideration of the variance request was narrow in its scope, looking at the setback question, and not the aesthetics or not the construction of the carport itself, but just the required findings that are necessary to approve or disapprove a variance request to reduce the required side yard setback. At the conclusion of the hearing, the commission voted two to two on a motion to approve the variance request, but did not reach a majority vote of the quorum. Therefore, the application was not approved or denied by the Planning Commission, and pursuant to the Planning Commission bylaws... pursuant to the Planning Commission bylaws, this variance request is now before the City Council for consideration. The project is located along the south side of Oak Terrace Road in the north-central area, residential area of Placerville. The site and the immediate surroundings are zoned for single-family residential uses and accessory uses. Like the subject location, site improvements include a single-family residence with an attached garage. The subject lot shares site characteristics with the adjacent neighboring Oak Terrace parcels, that being a downhill, what we call a down-loaded parcel from Oak Terrace, with a home construction below the Oak Terrace Road surface, but meeting the minimum setbacks addressed provided on the required, under the required R-120,000 zoning, and mature trees are located on each of these parcels. The variance process began in response to a code enforcement investigation that involved the construction of a carport first without obtaining a construction permit and also then without obtaining a variance for encroaching into the side yard setback. The carport does not meet the 10-foot minimum side yard setback required in the R-120 zone. A variance is required because at its closest location point, it's about 1 and 1/2 feet from the westerly side of the property line, and the property line is shared with 940 Oak Terrace Road. And the property owners of 940 Oak Terrace Road, Robert and Cheryl Patton, submitted a letter, actually, a total of three letters throughout this process, in support of their neighbor's variance request. The zoning ordinance and government code does require that when evaluating a variance request, certain findings must be made that specific circumstances distinguish the project site from its surroundings, and that these circumstances would create an unnecessary hardship for the applicant if unusual zoning standards were imposed. A variance request must also not adversely affect general plan policies. The applicants have indicated in their submittal that the reasons for the carport are to, one, have a place to store their larger vehicles on the property and to protect the vehicles from damage caused by pine trees and the elements, and then, two, Oak Terrace Road is narrow and has no shoulder for off-site parking. The applicants state that the location of the site was chosen where it would be less visible from public view, tree removal was not necessary, and where the site is less sloped to accommodate vehicle turnaround. The council can find that the request is reasonable, and that the neighbors most affected, the Pattons, have submitted their support for the carport in its constructed location. The council could further find that the request for the current location of the carport would not cause the elimination of landscape features such as the very large, mature pines that exist on the property. Should the council approve the variance, a building permit would be required from the Building Division. Staff has provided for the council Exhibit A of the staff report, which has all the suggested findings and conditions of approval for council's consideration. That concludes staff's report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rivas. Appreciate the... Does any member of the council have any questions for our staff?
I just have one. Did I, I can't find it. I've been looking. Was there a carport initially when the house was built?
We're going to have staff answer the question, then I'll let you come up. Absolutely.
The staff has no record of a previous carport existing on the property, and if there was one, it would have had to have been under 120 square feet, or else a building permit would have been required.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions for staff? Any further questions for staff? All right. I'd like to invite the applicant at this point to come on up. If there's anything you'd like to share with the council on this item, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas, council members, staff. My name is Blair Will. I'm an attorney with Pioneer Law Group, and I represent Jody Krieger, who is the applicant. She's standing here next to me. We just wanted to kind of highlight a few points with regard to the application for the variance. There was, in fact, an existing carport located on the nominal footprint of the new carport. It was there when she bought the building, and every indication was it had been there a long time, and it may have, in fact, even predated the zoning ordinance, and so I don't know that for a fact, but the suggestion was that it had been there a long time when it was taken down. The present carport location was chosen primarily for that reason, that the existing carport was there, and they wanted to make a carport that was nicer-looking, and so they took the old carport down, they put up the new carport. The new carport is a stone and beam construction, where the old carport was probably metal. So that was the reasoning for two things. Number one, the choice for that location, and number two, the initial expectation that there wasn't any permit requirement, and there weren't any zoning issues that would arise from constructing the carport in that location. It was only subsequent to that that they discovered that there was a code enforcement issue, and then, of course, had to go forward with the variance application. So the issues, I think Mr. Rivas addressed them fairly succinctly, but ultimately, the problem is that there's no parking on the street, and so the cars have to come down the very steep incline to get to a flat spot on the property, and in order to turn around, in order to park cars, the only place to put the carport is what was effectively in the setback. The neighbors next door, as mentioned also by Mr. Rivas, support the project and are happy with the construction and the way that it looks. They're the only people who can see it by the way that the parcel is laid out. And, of course, I've reviewed the conditions of approval with Ms. Krieger. She accepts the conditions of approval. It's not a problem, and the construction permits will be obtained as soon as the variance is processed, where the Building Department is happy to do it, they're just waiting for your decision. And so, and with that, I'll close my comments. If you have any particular questions for Mrs. Krieger, please.
Thank you so much. Does council have any questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone.
At this point, I'll open it up to public comment on this item. Does any member of the public wish to have any discussion on this item? Good evening.
I hope you'll excuse me. I came for another matter and didn't notice this on the agenda, but I think it's the same people I saw when I was before the Planning Commission on another matter, and I had a couple of concerns. One is that one of the commissioners had placed a bid on the same property, and I hope you can correct me if I'm wrong, and that kind of startled me, because under the rules that you have, that seemed appropriate to require recusal. That's number one. The second is that a letter was presented from somebody opposing the property. None of us in the audience got a chance to read that letter. I don't know if they did, but that's like the same day, and there's just fundamental due process. I know things get done kind of casually around here, but when people come in, voters, people who live here, have to pay a lot of money to go through this process, it's expensive to appeal it, and I'm not sure that it would have been necessary if those procedural steps had been followed. One, the commissioner should not have been on deciding that case. She knew it. She had a personal experience with the property. She placed a bid on it, so, and she knew about some of the issues in it. That clearly raises the point that she should not have been deciding that case, should have recused herself. Secondly, none of these surprises. Over the years, I've seen commissioners say, "Well, I don't want this stuff presented to me at the last minute. I want it a week before," whatever it is. But the last minute? Again, the public didn't have a chance to read it. I don't know if the Brown Act lets you do that or not, but it's just fundamental fairness. So those are the concerns I have. And again, if nobody really cares around, and it seems to accommodate the circumstances, fine. I know Oak Terrace, my aunt lived there for ages. All these roads in town are crazy because they follow the lines of old mining claims. That's why they're irregular, you know? So that was true for Oak Terrace. Reservoir Street, Reservoir Mine, Pacific Street, Pacific Mine, you know, the list goes on. So you've got to have some accommodations to avoid these cookie-cutter solutions for a problem where what you're cutting is kind of irregular to begin with. Those are the concerns I have.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. Yes, please, come on down. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Michael Kirk. I actually live on Oak Terrace. I just wanted, I've never met Mrs. Krieger before. I've just read the paperwork, and they've put a lot of time and effort into that property, and as a neighbor myself, I built a home just a few lots down a few years ago, and I had to go through the variance process, and they've done a wonderful job in uplifting that property, but helping the community in Oak Terrace, which has its own kind of flair in itself. I love it up there. So they've done some great work, and I would support the variance in this case, just because of the great work they've done. There are other people not too far away, who I don't know either, who are letting their properties go the other way. So in this case, I would applaud her efforts here, and I would hope it's supported in this case. Thank you.
Thank you coming, thank you for coming down tonight and supporting a neighbor. Any other comments? With that, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the council. First of all, I do have to, the information provided to us was very complete. I feel confident in our ability to make a decision tonight, and I support your neighbor's comments that the carport looks very nice, and strong attention to detail and character with the community. So thank you for your efforts on that. Do I hear a motion or any further comments?
I have a question.
Please.
I feel compelled now to ask. What was the nature of the objection to the project? Well, a letter was mentioned that came too late, and it ruined the spin of the earth and tilted off of its axis, so I want to know what it was.
So I'm assuming that you're referring to...
I have no idea what I'm referring to. I just heard about it right now.
I'm assuming, again, you're referring to a letter that was submitted on the project or...
There was a letter that was submitted that was in opposition to the project.
Or the original complaint that initiated the...
Well, yeah. Was it the one and the same?
No.
Okay.
Any other further questions?
What was the nature, besides, I don't... I'm waiting for him to find out.
I'm reading the letter dated, I had to look for it in the staff report. The letter is from Patty Farrington, and it's dated June 19 of 2018. It was an email. Dear Planning Commission members, we apologize for the lateness of this email. We just returned from out of town. We are across the street and three houses down from 948, and we have lived there since August of 2015. There have been almost constant earth-moving, fence-building, concrete-pouring, and building since we moved in. We were surprised to see the carport being built right next to the next-door neighbor's fence line, but assumed that the owners had obtained all proper permits for the work being done. We are not in favor with a variance for this project. We have not, we would not have been in favor of it if the owners had applied for it in the proper order. It is grossly outside the parameters of a legal 10-foot setback and sets a bad precedent for property owners to build what they please and then ask for an exemption.
Okay.
Short letter.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Do I have a motion on this item, or any other further questions or discussions?
I have a question for staff. Mr. Rivas, I was looking for it, and I've read it previously. The condition that the carport would have to get a building permit and get an inspection from our inspector, where is that in the conditions? Or any council member that can help me find that? I just want to make sure, when you build up against a property line like this, you want to make sure that everything is done correctly, they aren't creating a drainage problem or any other burden, because the setbacks are there for a reason. There's good reason to sometimes grant a variance. Just want to make sure that what we're doing is applicable to a permit and an inspection.
We would not want to appear to be too casual about this.
Well, you know, frequently, and this is a good situation where it doesn't add any sort of hazard to the neighboring property.
Well, the neighboring property's in favor of it.
Yeah, well, there's that, but sometimes if you get too close, the risk of spreading a fire from, you know, from neighbor to neighbor, again...
There's a reason why these...
The setbacks are there for a reason. Mr. Rivas.
Councilmember Acuna, I do not see a condition of approval specific to requiring a building permit, though keep in mind that this is a code enforcement issue, and so they are required to get a building permit, but I think that is a good idea, and I would recommend that the council add a condition number five, that a building permit will be applied for the subject carport.
Do you wish to make a motion?
So that would be my motion, to approve the variance, including the recommended additional item outlining the requirement of a building permit. My motion would be to approve the variance.
We may want to ask.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that, but I think we...
I also have a comment. I want to address, I know that it was stated that the reason one of the planning commissioners didn't vote for this is that they felt it would be setting a precedent, and I just wanted to confirm with Pierre that this is not setting a precedent, right? I mean, each request is, this was not a request, I understand that, and this, I don't think happens too often, that when a request is made for a, you know, a change, that it's considered on its own merit. In other words, we're not just going to willy-nilly allow everybody on Oak Terrace to just go ahead and build what they want to.
You are correct.
It's case by case, right?
You are correct, Councilmember Borelli. Each variance request would be on the merits of the individual property, and so it looks at the circumstances of finding a fact, particular that, a particular piece of property, so that you can grant a variance and find that it's not a grant of special privilege. You're looking at all different facts. Is it, is it something that you can grant based on, you know, the constraints of the property or different circumstances, but it would be unique to this property and can't necessarily be applied to others?
Councilmember Borelli, I think the point was made in the applicant's attorney's letter, but the point is that a variance is given because there's something unique to that particular property that gives the reason for the variance. So it really doesn't set a precedent.
Right, and I just wanted to, I knew that, but I just wanted to...
Good, so it's confirmed.
I also, I noted that Mr. Will did want to make a comment, adding a condition that wasn't in the report, so I believe he should be given the opportunity to make a comment.
Thank you, City Attorney Driscoll. Do you have anything further you'd like to add? Please come to the podium, please. Thank you.
With regard to the issue of the conditions of approval requiring subsequent approvals, and it does say on Exhibit A to the staff report, condition of approval number one requires that a construction permit be obtained for the carport structure.
All right.
So I would interpret that as already being in there, but I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you very much for clarifying that. Appreciate it, Mr. Will.
And I will amend my motion to remove that additional item, because I also finally had found it with the...
Okay, so I have an amended second.
Down there on Exhibit A.
Oh, I thought, John, you...
Did I second it?
I thought you did.
I will amend my second.
All right. So all those in favor? Aye. Oppose? All right. Variance granted. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. And with that, we are on item 12.1. We're back to cannabis. All right. To review draft cannabis business regulation ordinance and provide direction once again to the subcommittee and staff, and also refer to the proposed cannabis business overlay zone to the Planning Commission for review and recommendation. Mr. Morris.
Thank you, Mary and council. The committee meant, again, to review the recommendations that came from your last meeting to try to get this closer to, our goal is to present this at your next meeting on September 11th, to meet our timelines. We want to meet for introduction of the ordinance, which would then be a second reading on your next meeting, and then be adopted 30 days after that, take effect 30 days after that. So with that, I'll go through quickly the items that are here. First one was Section 5.28090 regarding the initial application procedure. Recommendations regarding, some language there, were amended, and you can see the changed language that's particularly related to the community benefit provision and what that would consist of, and that language was changed, as you can see in the highlighted portion. And I think primarily, I'll read the first part of that, which is, "Community benefits shall primarily be an agreed-upon percentage of gross receipts or gross revenues of the commercial cannabis business, but may also include," and then it goes on to, "in-kind donations, et cetera, other things that could be included. Primarily, it'll consist of that, of the percentage of the revenues received." Probably the most extensive change to, or not change...
Page 14.
That was on page 14, 13 and 14.
13, 14, yeah.
Yeah. The next one goes to item 528250, and this is one that we talked quite a bit about, and if you turn to that page, page 22 and 23, you'll see there are extensive changes here. What we did as staff, we worked with our Development Services Director, Pierre Rivas, to put together a map to show that if we included the 600-foot distances from sensitive areas, what would that give us, and where would that leave us of areas that these businesses could exist? And because of the linear nature of our city and our business district... of our city and our business districts, it virtually took out almost everything. I think there were maybe one or two small spots where potentially, and they were not good spots that we would be ideal to put these. So, we recognize that that was, was not an option. We went back. Initially, we looked at possibly even removing that language. And you'll note that in here, one of the problems that was caused by the language was related to residential zones. You'll note that the residential zone we are recommending has been removed completely from this. Again, primarily due to many, many of our commercial districts has a parcel that actually touches a residential zone. And therefore, if we left that language in, it immediately eliminates that area. In the end, we left in there from these sensitive areas, we left a distance of 250 feet and we, we think that works. We were doing a little bit more analysis on that with Pierre Rivas, our Development Services Director, but we think that the 250 feet works. And then in addition to that, we're recommending that we consider creating what we're calling a cannabis dispensary overlay zone. Cannabis business, excuse me, not cannabis dispensary, but cannabis business overlay zone. And there are maps in the back of the room that say the potential of where those would be located. They're also included in your agenda. If you look at the pink areas that also have hash marks through those, those are the areas that are being recommended to be considered for the cannabis business overlay zone. I want to also let you know that this would need to go back for approval to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission would actually create that zone and create what areas they would recommend that those would be. The reason we're calling it an overlay zone, I think this council is fairly familiar with an overlay zone. We did it recently for some high-density housing that we, we were doing in relation to our regional housing needs assessment. So, this would be a similar circumstance where the businesses could only be within that overlay zone. And what we're recommending here, initially, we looked at just commercial, heavy commercial and highway commercial. There was one area that the committee looked at that felt perhaps within the central business district, actually, where they felt that it may be appropriate to have, and that's in an area down on Lower Main Street. So, we, we also added central, central business district in, in the zoning areas, but it won't include the entire zone, central business district. Only those areas that have that, that hashed area on the map that are identified as part of the housing overlay zone. So, it'd only be those parcels. So, that is the most significant change in the ordinance from what you saw at your last meeting. The next, the next item was a simple phrase at the end of 250. And I think that one becomes mute now because we eliminated a lot of this. Let me see. Actually, it is still in there, E3. We removed the language that said, "and consensus, consistency with surrounding properties at your recommendation." Next item goes to 528320, which, I'll turn over to that item. And again, that was regarding the signage. You recall, we had language in there that said we were regulating that signage anywhere in the state.
Little bad.
That item, I apologize, is not actually highlighted, but it was in that section I6 under 360. So, that's at the top of page 33, number 6. If you see that relating to signage, we took out the language that said "anywhere in the state" because we don't have the right to regulate signage anywhere in the state. Other comments that were brought up for consideration, I want to mention, Mayor Thomas stated that 528370, her recommendation was that we only, for the deliveries, that we only allow that for medicinal marijuana, not for adult use. There, I did not hear consensus from the remainder of the council, so we have not implemented that change in here.
She just, I think, made, you made the statement.
Yeah.
What is this on page eight? There's something highlighted about delivery and you missed that one.
Yeah, that, that was from, that was from the previous meeting. That was only highlighted to talk about, have us, have that discussion about deliveries. It's, it's nothing more than that. So, nothing, and that was again, that's not a change from the last one. That's consistent with what we had. The other items, Public Member Kelly Chisano, let's see, I don't see Kelly here tonight, mentioned a couple of things. He mentioned a section in 250 about the language read that you couldn't have it next to any parcel within the city. It was kind of confusing that was worded. That's been removed based on the changes that we've made to that section 250. So, that's no longer an issue. Section 100, Theodore Zubba, recommended some things related to the issue of fair market value. Staff reviewed that and looked at it and we felt that although this may be an issue in larger jurisdictions, we didn't feel it would be a major issue within the city of Placerville. He also spoke again on the issue, again, somewhat related to 51% ownership in section 528200. Again, staff reviewed this with the city attorney and HDL and did not feel that this would be a major issue. This is more related to where you've got major investors coming in and investing in, in the business. We don't anticipate having that. We could, I guess, but we don't anticipate that having with what we're, happening with what we have here. He also spoke regarding the cash-only part of cannabis. And I think it was also later, though, that we recognized that there are non-cash options with cannabis now. And I think our finance director talked about that we've confirmed that our bank, there are options with the city's bank that we use for accepting the money, et cetera. So, so those, that issue does not seem to be as prevalent as maybe it was at one time. Finally, Rod Miller of Eldorado County Growers Alliance spoke in support of the ordinance but encouraged the council to support deliveries both inside and outside the city. And no changes were recommended from the council and therefore, no changes were made to that item at this time. So, at this time, what we're asking is for further clarification. I think the main item is going to be 528250 related to locations and the map that you have. I think that our recommendation tonight is to ask you to review the draft ordinance, give any other direction, and then also refer the particular item related to a cannabis business overlay zone to the Planning Commission, requesting that they take action on it. And probably look at giving them some timelines to move fairly quickly on that to get this in order with the rest of our ordinance. Now, that'll be a separate item from this ordinance. That'll be in, actually in our zoning ordinance that they will review and make additions and changes to the zoning ordinance.
So, that is the only action item tonight because the other, the other item is just to review and provide direction?
Correct.
Okay. Great. Thank you so much. Does the council have any other questions or comments on this item at this point?
I'd just like to thank the staff and our consultant and Vice Mayor Acuna. Their work on this has been really good so far. I think we're, we're developing something that, that can work if, if adopted. And so, very pleased with how this is going along. It was fun to work on the map and actually see how things went and how quickly all the town just disappeared because of the way the town is laid out. I, I like the, I like the solution we came up with. Obviously, this is a draft. Poses and minuses in here. But anyway, I just want to thank Vice Mayor Acuna for working on this project with me.
Thank you. It's been an excellent experience. Thank you.
Thank you for all your work on it as well. Any other comments or questions?
None at this time.
Okay. I do have a, a comment on direction that I'd like to make. In here, I, I am concerned about residential neighborhoods having houses that perhaps have, have grows that, that are not allowed. And I, and so, that is a concern to me. I think there's a house in my neighborhood that has suspect activity and I wouldn't want that to happen in any, any houses in our city. And I'd like to clarify that language in here because I realize that state law allows for six plants for indoor cultivation, and I recognize that. But what I would like added to this ordinance is language that prohibits residential cultivation except as allowed by state law. And I think probably under 5.28.030 on page one, where we talk about cannabis cultivation and commercial cannabis activities prohibited unless specifically authorized by this chapter. So, I would like to specify our policy on indoor cultivation, that it is not allowed except as allowed by state law. And I believe you have language to that effect, but just like to clarify that because in reading through, someone might look at this and say, oh, great, I can, you know, grow myself and, well, not grow myself, but you know what I mean. Thank you for that direction. Does the council agree with that?
It sounds good. And I have a feeling, too, that it helps with that idea that when there is enforcement, if it's in, if it's in the ordinance, if it's an enforceable thing in the ordinance, it strengthens our hand to go after folks that are...
Just clarifies it.
Not playing by the rules.
Yeah, gives our place some additional tools.
So, that would include the impacts to the neighbors?
Right.
And all those sorts of things?
Yeah, just tighten that up a little bit.
And have it clearly spelled out here early on.
Right. Right. Good. All right. At this point...
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. At this point, I'd like to open it up for public comment. Please come on down, state your name for the record, and you have three minutes for comments. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Miller.
Good evening, councilmembers. Rod Miller, Eldorado County Growers Alliance and Chairperson of the Yes on MNPQRS on the November ballot. And I, I support the amendments, the changes recommended by your staff. I think it's made the ordinance more workable. And at the same time, as with the ballot measures, NPQRNS on the November ballot, they protect your community, at the same time, providing an avenue for our cannabis to become legal, commercial activities and support your community through taxes and fees and help to address some of, some of the community issues we've heard about, mental health issues, homelessness, substance abuse, and support your effort. I believe the zoning, from what I understand from folks that are looking to invest in this community, the zoned areas for cannabis businesses are, are workable. And it looked like a good selection, a fair compromise. Perhaps someday, the downtown historic district will want to have cannabis businesses, too, because the other areas are flourishing based on the cannabis business. So, thank you very much for continuing to work on this, moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Good evening.
May I have a very good evening to you, ma'am, the city council and the city staff and respectful citizens of Placerville. I have, my name is Munir Chadri. I go by Mac. I have a property near 308140 Road. And I was requesting respectfully that if that could be added in that overlay, that map that you have drawn with the hash, hashtagged my property, you know, with that cannabis, I would appreciate it so much. And I had a lengthy conversation with Mr. Rivas and I told him my plans, what I planned to do with that cannabis thing. Plus, we're going to build a big hotel, a courtyard on that property. It's close to seven acres of property. So, and I pledge to you, everything will be legal and nothing will be out of the legal bounds.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Appreciate it. Any other comments? Good evening.
Sue Taylor, I really didn't want to get into this issue because I really couldn't believe it was happening. And I thought you put something on the ballot to see if you could get it taxed and you made an emphasis that, don't worry, this doesn't mean we're going to pass anything. It's just a, if we do do it, we have a mechanism to tax it. Well, apparently, now you're rushing forward with the ordinance and where and how it's all going to be implemented. So, I guess we are doing it. And I don't know that very many people seem aware of the impact of doing it is going to be in the future. We just spent a half an hour on so many issues in the city that you just pretty much said you don't have the resources to take care of it. Yet, you want to, and that, you also brought up that we're a sensitive area because of all the, most of the city is residential. And you can't separate it because nearly everywhere that you're going to go is going to be near residential. But yet, you really want to put it here. I don't know why you just don't leave this for the county to deal with, who has more resource, resources to deal with the regulation. It's not like this stuff is not accessible in the county. I don't know why all of a sudden it has to go into the city. And it's also concerning, I think it's to council people have their properties designated for this designation. And I don't know if that's a conflict of interest, talking about this. But, but I have concerns about why, the motivation and, and I don't see a lot of public, I don't get a feel, that's why I kind of wanted the election. I wanted to see where people were landing in the city of Placerville and, and is our whole demographics going to change? I mean, we've been fighting for history, to retain history in this town for 10 years, and now this. And I, I think it's, it's getting disheartening to be here in the city and try to fight just to have a normal community. And I think this is going to greatly change the, I mean, it's already changing. You're already saying that we can't help you. You brought up, call the police chief. We, everybody on Main Street calls the police chief constantly. I tell everybody to call. I, I was at the market, or the antique fair and somebody was complaining. I told her, call the police. Well, they can't come. So, to say, do this, and that's your solution, you can't keep creating more issues that you don't have solutions for regulation. So, I'm just going to end with, maybe it's time to stop the attractions that you're talking about that are here at Placerville and let the county be the regulator for this issue. And then, I, I would like you to see you stop this process until after the election. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Appreciate your comments. Anyone else? All right. I'll close public comment and bring this back to the council for discussion and action. Any council member comments or questions?
I would like the city manager or the city attorney to just briefly explain why there is a timetable for this particular item. And the consequences if we do not adopt an ordinance, there are real consequences. Mr. Morris or Mr. Driscoll?
Again, you recall that in, I believe it's November of 2017, we adopted, continued with the prohibition of cannabis business activities in the city of Placerville. And that was an urgency ordinance which we were allowed to do on a temporary basis for one more year. At that time, we have two choices. We either adopt a permanent ordinance prohibiting it or we adopt an ordinance similar to what we're talking about here that would allow it under certain circumstances. So, our goal is to have this adopted prior to that happening. I, and in response to Ms. Taylor, I want to also announce, we, we did hold two workshops, public workshops regarding this, along with now, I believe this is, besides the tax measure ordinance, this is the second time we've had this on our agenda in particular, after a lot of comments from the public. I understand the concerns. We have some of those same concerns that we've talked about. However, I will also state, there's no, not been a lack of opportunity for the public to speak up on this. And I note that in those meetings, in all of those meetings, Ms. Taylor, I think you've been the second person that has spoken up to oppose this in all of those meetings that we've held, probably many hours of meetings that have been held on this topic. So, the opportunity has been there, but, and yes, we do still have concerns. We hope that we are doing the right thing in regulating this to control what happens there. There's also, yes, we could let the county do it. However, does that mean that the county then gets all the revenue and, and we get the people that buy it there and then come into our city and use it here and we still have the problems? So, does that really solve the problem? There's a number of different views on that and which, which is better, but I think that we've given the opportunity to see what is appropriate for Placerville. And again, this council knows, there's been very little, if any, opposition. I think, as I would say, I think two people that have spoke against it.
I would like to add, I have, I've, I'd like to express my ongoing opposition to recreational marijuana inside the city limits. And I do continue to hold that viewpoint. And I do recognize that this ordinance reflects both recreational and medicinal use. And my support is for medicinal only and not for recreational. And I, and I do stand on that, on that stance and want the council to reflect that.
Mayor Thomas, if I might, just what the city manager indicated is to the reasons for the timing on this is in fact, correct. is in fact correct. Our urgency ordinance will expire, I believe it's October 27th. And at that point, if we don't have an ordinance in place, either allowing it or prohibiting it, we're at the mercy of the state.
Which we certainly don't want.
Yes. And also, one other thing, because one of the speakers addressed and made a request that his property be included in this map that you have as an example in front of you. I want to make it very clear that the council's not acting on that map at all. It's not part of your decision-making. It's not part of the matter that's before you tonight. That matter will go to the planning commission and will be determined by them in terms of, and then ultimately, it comes back to the council, but at this point, it's not before you.
But I also would like to agree with Sue that one of the things that we have been saying is that the ballot initiative is for the tax issue, right?
Correct.
Okay, so I think that's where the confusion is, so maybe you could separate that. I mean, it's like, are we putting the tax issue on and the ordinance? Or are we just, do we have to have an ordinance to have the, you know, it's confusing.
I think what, I'm trying to speak for Ms. Taylor, was stating is that her understanding was we were going to wait till after, see what the results were of the tax measure, which would then be an indicator of how we might want to move forward with the business ordinance. We are a little bit restricted in that measure because of the, when our current ordinance ends in October 26, 27, along there. And that is the reason why we are trying to get something on the books before that happens, so to avoid what you've stated, but.
Well, the way I'm looking at, thinking, and this is what, you know, is that the tax issue is just in case we decide to approve it.
And that's how the tax measure was presented, but we also talked about at that time when we started this process back in March, February, March, I think?
About the ordinance.
That we were going to start this process to look at that. The tax measure was the first step, and then this is.
So, we're under the gun for both. We have to have an ordinance and we have to have, if we want it, the tax.
Okay, great.
Go ahead, Ms. [inaudible].
Councilmember Clarice.
No, no, go ahead. I was just going to point out that if we don't have an ordinance, then the state regulations take effect.
It falls to the state position, yes.
And the voters of California voted to approve it, what, two years ago now, almost?
Is there any final direction to staff in the committee on the business regulation?
Yes, I have a couple of points on the map. And again, this is a draft recommendation to the city council. Is that correct, Mr. Driscoll?
The planning commission.
Or, excuse me, the planning commission. If we look at a couple, let's start at Main Street at Rector Court. And there's a hash mark there, but it isn't colored in pink.
Can you read that?
That should be Main Street.
I can't, it's so small.
It's almost right exactly in the middle of the map, and you can see the hash marks, yeah.
Oh, okay. Oh, now I see.
It's just so everybody understands, that should also have been colored in with the commercial color. And the question also was the, one of the parcels we discussed at the ad hoc committee meeting was the skate shop across the street, which was an A and P and market back in my days.
Yes, Minimart.
Minimart. That seems like we would want to have that parcel in there as well. And again, at this scale, the map, very difficult to do, but it would be my recommendation that we include the current skate shop. The other oversight that I discovered in preparing for this evening's meeting was on Perouse Road. And you've got Placerville Drive and then Perouse Road. Some of those businesses, those parcels actually go through. The parcel sizes, they run all the way through, so they may have a Placerville Drive as they have a Perouse Road address. The Ferguson Building, for example, is in, currently recommended directly across the street from it. I don't think it was our intention. There was some discussion at the ad hoc committee to leave Cold Springs Road and Perouse Road out of this, and at that time, it made sense. Now, in seeing this exhibit, it actually seems as though it would make more sense to allow, because of the nature of the parcels, to allow both sides of Perouse slash Cold Springs to be included. So, like Stone Lane, Sleepy Hollow Court.
Believe it or not, I'm not trying to be funny. So, the DMV, and then there's a couple of houses.
And you've got the radiator shop.
Then there's the radiator shop, and then there's that thing that's been 47 different things. I think now it's a tool, equipment, very, very nice business.
Yeah, I understand. It's a very nice work.
So, and that sort of suite of things all the way over to the Elks Hall.
Used to be where the DA's office was.
Is it the Elks? No, Masonic. Sorry, Elks. Sorry. Masonic Lodge. Yeah.
So, those would be my only two comments on the map.
All right. Is there any further direction to staff in the cannabis subcommittee on that item? All right.
Well, I'd like to know what property we're talking, is that, is that the gentleman's property? Is that what we refer to as the Simorelli property? Hold on, he'll tell. But thank you.
No, actually, the gentleman's property is above the Simorelli property, so it's just below, if you're traveling on, it's also what we collectively have been calling the Pink House, those of you that are aware of the Pink House, where you have a lot of issues with that Pink House. It sits on that acreage.
So, it's behind the In-N-Out and the office.
Right, it's below the In-N-Out, but just above.
And above Forney.
Yeah, just east of Forney rather than south of it.
So, the subcommittee can work with staff to take that under consideration.
Let me ask Mr. Reeves a quick question. What is that parcel currently zoned?
That's highway commercial.
Was that the one that we did a zone change, oh, in the last eight or 10 years? There was Stansel family who had a piece in there that we rezoned.
That was next to In-N-Out, and that was next to the Office Max.
But that had a house on it also.
It was next to Office Max.
So, this is not that piece of property?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, so the subcommittee and council can take that under consideration.
So, you do have the one motion we're asking you to make, and I'd recommend that you simply refer this to the planning commission for consideration of a cannabis business overlay zone and not go any further with that.
I'll make that motion.
I'd like to make a comment.
Do I have a second on that motion? Okay. Comment? Yes.
Yes. We did have, we did have a vote on this. It happened in 2016, and the city voted in the majority for this particular item. They did. It was like, I forget, we got a readout from somebody, but it was like 53, 47, 54, 46, 52, 40. It was in that ballpark. So, when the residents of the city were asked to weigh in on this subject two years ago, the residents of this city voted in favor of this thing. Okay, now, not all the particulars, not all the stuff, that's what we're working on now. We're working on the nuts and bolts. But this idea that somehow this is a notion out there that's against what's going on is not accurate. It happened, and they had that election.
Oh, excuse me. No, I'm sorry, public comment is closed. Public comment is closed. Sue, Sue, I need you to sit down. Sue. You have expressed your comments. It is now Councilmember Clarice's turn.
It's a statement of fact. The fact of the matter is, is that the residents of this town, when asked to vote on this subject, voted in the affirmative. That's a statement of fact. I'm just saying it because it's been put out there that we should wait for another statement from the citizens of the city. And the citizens of the residents of the city may decide that they don't like the tax idea, but they've weighed in on this subject, so we have to respect that, I think, and move forward. And so, and then also, the issue of, we'll let the county have it. Once again, I've said this ad nauseam, but I'm going to say it again. We don't want people to go outside the city limits and buy cars, or refrigerators, or all sorts of things. Why? Because they generate taxes for this city. It's how it runs. That's a cold, hard fact. We can't get away from it. This is how the city operates. And we have a looming financial crisis on the horizon, and it's not that far away. So, we have got to quickly decide on getting new revenue for the city. That is a cold, hard fact, and we will be dealing with that in the budgets that come into the future very soon, next year, the year after that, and certainly within a couple of years. This is a way to raise revenue. It is a new industry. It would be new to this community. We're not hoping that someone drops a big box on us, which I can't even imagine how people would scream about that. That's another way to raise lots of money for the city. Until somebody comes to the podium and suggests a way to raise lots of money for this city, right now, this is the only thing that's out there. We may like it, we may not like it. We'll have a debate about that, and that's great, and folks will get up there and they can say what they want. But these are the cold, hard facts, and we've got to deal with them. And, you know, as long as I'm sitting up here, and that may end in November, I have no idea. That's my point of view. I am not particularly enamored with weed. I haven't done that for quite some time in my life. Right now, it's refrigerators. I say the same thing over and over. It's a refrigerator. Someone's going to buy it. Might as well buy it here. And the folks that are telling us, let that go outside the county, don't have to run this city. And I'm sorry if people get offended when I speak plainly about the truth, but that's the truth. So, you can leave if you want. That's fine with me. But those are the facts, and I will continue to argue that point. And as for the whole debilitating aspects, you know, if you drive at the beginning where this crosshatch goes all the way to the end of the crosshatch, and you include that man's property out there, I guarantee you, you could buy alcohol and tobacco and all sorts of things that are really bad for humanity. And we're not talking about getting rid of any of them. You can get hammered on Main Street and drive right away. That won't happen with this ordinance because you won't be able to smoke it on site. We voted in favor of this thing, folks.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are you an aye, John?
Oh, yes.
And opposed? And I will be in opposed because recreational use is moving forward on that, so I will vote no. So, all right. Now, I recognize that we are just voting on the overlay zone, but that will be governed by the business regulations, which include recreational, so. All right, item 12.2, direct staff on how to fill a vacant council seat. And I will say that this item took all of us by surprise. We learned that Councilmember Wilkins had other plans and had purchased a home and had moved out of the area. We learned a week ago, prior to the last council meeting, and so it was a surprise to all of us. And so, here we are. We certainly wish her well in her new endeavors, but we're having to figure out how to fill her vacant seat. So, that brings us here tonight. So, City Manager Morris, Mr. Morris, would you like to explain our options to us because they are limited?
Sure, Mayor and council. I think the first thing I'd like to start with to answer that question that is out there probably among many people is, why is this not just added to the November election and be part of that? I think I can safely say for myself and probably mostly council members, that would have been our preference. But Government Code, Section 36512, clearly outlines that if the seat becomes vacant less than 130 days prior to the next general, or next municipal election, that is not an option. You can no longer add it to that ballot. And so, that is not an option to you to have it on the November election. The two options you have at this time are to either appoint someone to the position or you can call for a special election. And you have to take that action within 60 days. I did put some, if you choose to appointment, do an appointment. I put some dates in here that we would recommend you do. I want to emphasize, that is not a recommendation that you appoint. That's just giving you an option. There are some fairly tight timelines to meet if you want to do that. If you choose to do a special election, you have to do that within 60 days. So, you don't need to make that decision tonight. Again, if you want to make the decision to appoint, I would recommend that you make that decision tonight because that appointment has to happen within 60 days of the date that Councilmember Wilkins vacated her position, which was August 15th. So, with that, if you decide to schedule a special election, that special election cannot take place less than 114 days. Is that the right number, John? 114 days from the date you schedule it. So, if you schedule it today, it's one, a minimum of 114 days from today. If you wait, and you don't have to, you could wait till closer to the end of the 60 days to schedule that, and then it would be 114 days from that date. I want to emphasize that some of the things related to the special election, we estimate it'd be about a $10,000 cost if it's a standalone election for the city to bear. I mentioned in here the potential, there is, as you know, Senator Gaines in this district who is running for a position on the Board of Equalization. If he is elected, that position becomes, his position becomes vacant, and then the governor selects a date for a special election. We had initially heard some information that perhaps that would occur in March. We checked with the County Elections Department. They're saying more like April or May, I think, is what they said. Is that right, Regina? But we won't know that until the governor actually sets that date. The governor sets the date for that special election. And so, that's kind of up in the air whether or not we could hit that date. I'm going to ask the city attorney. I could not, I found the minimum of 114 days out. I do not find any maximum of when you have to do that. Did you see anything?
That's crazy.
If you do nothing, it gets filled with the next general election.
Right, right. So, those are the options to the council.
Can you repeat that last little bit there just for a second?
There's provision in the code that says if the council does not call an election pursuant to paragraph two, and that's a special election, not less than 114 days, the vacancy shall be filled at the next regularly established election date.
But basically, if you don't call for a special election, not less than 114 days, then the vacancy is filled at the next regularly established election date, so.
So, we could go two years with four council members. My goodness. All right.
So, I think that's all I have. Both the city attorney and I can answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from the council on this matter?
No.
No questions.
All right, let's open up for public comment. Anyone like to share their thoughts on this item before us? All right, with that, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the council. Well, please come on down, Mr. Smith.
Number one, I'm here to speak in behalf of the electoral process, letting people decide. It's an essential part of what a republic is all about. We're going to have an election in November where we have, excitingly, six people running for three slots. When's the last time that happened? And you know how difficult it is to get folks willing to take your jobs. If you've got a deep-seated neurotic need to be loved, it's going to be severely challenged when you're a council member. No matter what you do, somebody's going to complain, and you don't get a whole bunch of money. You could get more flipping burgers at Burger King. So, the idea that you've got six choices out there is very nice. Why have two of the five selected by appointments? And at least, why do it now before 60 days when you could have another panel, who knows, up there? So, that's number one. If the issue is, oh, we've got to have a full panel of five people, how many times have you had a decision that rested on one vote? I mean, even the mural project got three strikes, and you got it, you got it right. Somebody hit the ball third time. But you rarely have a close call. I can't remember one. So, that's number one. The second is that you're going to have a situation where, again, you want people to be able to make a decision. This is a time when we're going to chance to do that. If you're going to say, oh, we're going to save the public $10,000 for our new special election, $10,000 for democracy? That's a bargain. Look back at how money has been spent in the past. A few years ago, about $10,000 was spent for a public opinion poll for the express purpose of marketing a tax hike measure. Remember? Now, the value of that was not judged by whether the measure succeeded or not. How, what did you learn? Did you learn, what you learned was, how many people read newspapers? What newspapers do they read? What radio station?
The item before us is how to fill the council seat, Mr. Smith. The item before us is how to fill the council seat.
That's right, and it's about $10,000. So, please, it would not be genuine, would it? It would not be sanguine to argue that you're saving, or would be saving, $10,000 of taxpayer money. money by having a special election, avoiding a special election, because you want to save $10,000, when we spent $5,000 for a 15-minute bike race through town. I know, that was thought of as a great bargain. But the point is, what's more important? What has more value? Letting the people decide? I say yes. And that's why it's worth doing. But not necessary to decide now, unless it is, as the staff report says, you have, we have an opportunity. Well, it can be interpreted different ways. Hopefully, it'll be interpreted as, you have an opportunity to do the right thing. The opportunity to do the right thing is let the public decide. That's what the electoral process is all about. $10,000, so what? It's a value that's worth it, when it comes to letting people decide. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Would anyone else like to speak on this item? All right, with that, I'll close this item, or bring it back to the council for discussion and action. Any further thoughts? Do you like to start?
Yeah, I've been noodling around with this for a while, because, you know, in my situation, and actually, Councilmember Barelli, because we're up for election, so we're kind of like, we're in the fray, as it were. And I thought about it for a while. My, and I agree with Kirk. I believe that it's a good idea to let folks decide these seats. Although, you know, we got to choose one, and, you know, Mark does a pretty good job. So I thought that was okay. But it's in the middle of an election cycle, which makes it kind of an odd, odd thing, to sort of say, well, we're going to put somebody in there. There's ways to mitigate the cost of an election, but it's still going to be expensive. I mean, it's, and $10,000, yes, we've spent money on lots of things. Some people might think they were frivolous, or not, or not important, but, you know, at the time, we made the best decision we could. I don't think it's that much money to spend to do this. And so, and I have to say, I'm uncomfortable making that selection in the middle of an election cycle. I just don't, and I don't know why. You know, I was trying to explain it to my wife the other night. I said, it makes me feel funny. And she goes, well, why? And I go, I don't know why. It just does. And then it's, I'm kind of blathering here, but, but there's a part of me that just says, let's put this thing out, do a special election, absorb the cost, figure out ways to mitigate it. If we went, would this election be a ballot, like, by mail thing? So it's totally by mail? Or we would do, like, voting and the whole bit? Okay. Because sometimes special elections are done, you know, you just do it mail. And I don't know what the percentages are of people that do mail-in ballots now in the city, but if it's like everywhere else, it's a fairly healthy, a fairly healthy percentage of folks are already used to doing that. And that could be a way to mitigate the cost a little bit. So my personal preference is simply not to make that decision now, and to have it be made in a special. That's just my thought, right now, as I speak. I might just, but I don't know.
Vice Mayor Acuna?
I'm going to ask Cleaver, John, a couple of questions, I think, if it's okay?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Is there any way to do an absentee-only ballot, special election?
Not that I'm aware of. I'm not saying you can't, but at this point, I can't tell you that there is.
Okay. And if we were to appoint, we would do a, and we've appointed it in the past, and we've had pretty good success. I'm thinking about Carl Hagan.
They've had great success.
And would the current candidates be eligible to, obviously not seated council members, but the other candidates that are on the current election website, would they be eligible to apply if we were to do an appointment?
You know, I've been thinking about that and wrestling with the thing, because you could have somebody...
You speak in the microphone, John.
Whose name's still going to be on the ballot. Let's say you appointed one of the candidates. Their name's still going to be on the ballot. So if they're appointed, they're going to fill out the rest of Councilmember, former Councilmember Wilkins's term, which is another roughly two years. If they're elected, they got a four-year term.
Right, okay.
So, I mean, I don't have an answer for that, because it's an unusual situation, and there's nothing in case law that tells me that this is what happens in that situation. I suppose you could, and then the person would have to make a, to use a redundant phrase, an election as to which seat they are filling.
But they'd still be on the ballot and receive votes?
Yeah, yeah.
And there's no way to pull them off the ballot if they were to be appointed?
Exactly.
And I would assume that that person, if they got elected, would then resign, which puts you back in the position somewhat, that you are, not completely, because, but it would be somewhat the same situation. You'd be in a similar circumstance to have to do that. Because that's, I thought of that as well. I kind of went, well, maybe, you know, I mean, who knows? If you put, if, my recollection is, when, when, well, I do recall, I actually was one of the applicants when Carl was chosen. I don't hold too many bad thoughts about that. But anyway, haunts my dreams. And I remember when we did it with...
For Mark.
For Mark. And it was an entirely different group of, but besides myself, no one else that applied, I think, had run recently. They had run, like, in the past, but it had been several election cycles back. That was my recollection. So it was like, it was a real different pool of people that showed up when I did it, you know, when we filled Bob's, well, when you all filled Bob's spot. Was that Bob's, or was that? Anyway, whatever, that's not important.
I wasn't on the council.
Yeah, yeah, whatever. But, I mean, when they filled that spot, so, yeah. And that's kind of why I'm sitting here thinking, you know, appointing someone in the middle of an election cycle is just kind of a, it's just kind of a sticky, it's just a sticky thing, you know? You can just, there is...
Well, one of the big concerns I have is, is $10,000 cost. And what if it becomes $25,000? Elections is, I don't know, Regina, if you wouldn't mind me asking, have, how confident are they that they can get us, they can say $10,000?
They were not confident in that answer. I believe it was just maybe a ballpark figure, but they cannot say for sure.
Yeah. And I have a fear too, because that number's, that number's been thrown around, but I've heard it in previous, not just, not with the council, but with other elected bodies. And they say, oh, we have to have a special election. And for some reason, $10,000 just rolls out there, and I think it's just, it might be more mythology than an actual number.
Where would those funds come from? The general fund?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, obviously, because we don't have any budget in our budget.
We did not budget. You know, we could, but we didn't.
Vice Mayor Acuna, sorry.
And I'm surprised that Mr. Driscoll did not have an answer for that question. But it does, I can see out there, a person's name is going, it's already too late. You can't take anybody's name off. If you guys decided to storm out and never come back, your names are going to be on there. The other thing that I have noticed, and Kirk, while he is adamant for allowing the people to vote on, to have their say, and I agree, in a perfect world, Councilmember Wilkins would have finished out her term, instead of moving and seeking an election to the school board district, which I discovered when I checked the status of the county elections. So, it puts us in a very awkward position. I'm really concerned about spending that kind of money. Then the point that Mr. Smith made also is, it was like twisting arms to get people to run most of the time. Who's going to come forward in February, or March, or April? What's that going to look like? Or May, April or May, they're going to have to do a campaign, you know, back that up all the days. Regina, wouldn't it not be the same criteria as the candidates are all going through right now, with the days to file their statement, get their signatures, and qualify? So, we're going to have to follow that schedule. Who's going to come forward and do that?
Also, I think we find in mid-cycle election, or actually, a special election, that it's incredibly hard to mobilize voters, which is incredibly difficult, difficult process.
And you know what? That's one of my concerns, is that so close to this election, how many people are going to be willing to go out and vote again? I mean, we see what happens.
Hard enough to vote in a regular election.
It is, exactly.
That is a strong concern of mine. I believe our city attorney, Driscoll, has some comments down there.
Just thinking some more about this, and I don't have an answer, but I have another question.
Okay.
You know, that's probably the reason I passed the bar exam, is not because I had the answers, but I could spot the issues. One thing that occurred to me is if you ask a question about somebody who's running, and what had happened if they got appointed. If they got appointed and were seated prior to the election, there could be an argument, a legal argument, that they are not eligible to be elected, because they're already a seated council member. I don't have the answer to that, but it raises another issue. And so, I mean, this is fraught with all kinds of, it'd be a great bar exam question.
Yes, it would.
But what I, I just asked the city manager if it would be possible at all to condense this and delay your decision, to give me an opportunity to try and get some more answers to some of these issues. I may not have them, they may not be there, but at least have the opportunity to try.
Okay, question, to that effect. If we were to move forward with an appointment, could we then clarify who is eligible to respond?
Sure.
Based on your findings?
Yes, I mean, that would, if you move forward with the appointment process, and that's the way you want to go, I can do some more research, I can get some more opinions to determine what would be the effect of someone who is currently running.
Because that would be a legal finding, that wouldn't need a council decision for that.
Right, but I'm also telling you, there may not be an answer out.
But then my next, okay.
I mean, are you suggesting that we actually have, like, a, you can't, you can't apply if you're on the ballot?
Will you not be eligible to?
No. I don't think that would be it.
Because I don't even think that, I mean, I'm not a lawyer.
The question is, if somebody applies, and they're on the ballot, and they're appointed, would they still be eligible to be elected?
I understand that thing, but I thought I heard maybe along the lines of that we could set up some parameters about who could...
That's actually, that's where I was going, so, okay.
I doubt it, because I doubt. That would be weird. Yes.
All right, great. I also have a problem with, you know, going six months, or more, without a full council. You know, that's...
And I think we need five people up here, and I also think that an appointment, you know, we can, if we did have an appointment, we can have 10 or 20 people apply, and I really do think that all of us have enough experience in what to look for, you know, in a competent council member, that, and as we, it's been stated, anytime this appointment has been used, and it has been, we've gotten some really great people that, you know, have gone on then to be elected later on. So I think the public, you know, felt the same way, but I, I don't see anything wrong with appointing. I mean, the people voted for us with confidence that we would do our job, and I think this would be one more thing of...
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Thank you. And I agree with what Patty Barelli has just said, and Mr. Driscoll's, Driscoll's brainwaves must have just trickled down here a little bit. In thinking, when you put this out there, right now, these current folks have applied to run for a four-year term for this city council. If they're confident, capable candidates, they would want to serve a full-year term, and they're confident that they're going to be elected, or they would not have thrown their hat into the ring. If we're going to go ahead and appoint somebody, it's very clearly a two-year term. It's subject to having to run again immediately in two years, which is not fun. So, if you're really, you know, kind of playing devil's advocate, if you really think you have a standing good chance in November, you wouldn't want to be involved in a two-year appointment process. I mean, or, and if you came forward in that process, you would recognize that you were also openly giving up their potential. If you can run, and we could interview, and if that person was a candidate, and that was the person that got appointed, they would know that they were going to give up two years of service.
Do I...
All right, does that make sense? It's a devil's advocate.
Okay, I can argue, I mean, this is, you know what? We should have a big bottle of wine, and some hors d'oeuvres.
We need a motion on the table.
No, 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 because I need to respond to that. Because, okay, for one thing, when we've done this in the past, there hasn't been an election sitting there, so we didn't have a pool of people. So we didn't have a pool of people sitting there saying, I want to do this, I want to run for this office, I'm, you know, going to go off and whatever. It was different. There was, there was, you know...
But they applied, a lot of people applied.
They did, but it's a different environment, because you could make the argument, okay, if we can go find somebody, why isn't that person running for office right now? Because they have an opportunity to get on the city council, there's three seats available, they could run. And so, it's, to me, it's a bit of an apples and oranges thing, because to me, it's like, if there's all these people, like I always say, if they're beating down the doors to get here, they'd have applied, and they'd be going through all this. And it's kind of like, the other thing too, is if you're running for this office, and you're not in one of the chairs already, I would certainly apply, because it's almost like you're playing with house money at that point. You could go, listen, I'll apply, they may appoint me. As we saw...
But you apply for two years.
Yeah, I understand that, but you know what? I'd almost take the chance, because we have seen this in the past. Frequently, when those two seats come up, there are fewer people that run. The three seats almost always attract a bigger crowd. You know, the last time, when I ran four years ago, there was five people. This year, there's six people. Two years ago, there were two people. So, you know, I mean, y'all, we'll make a decision here, but, I mean, I'm just saying, if you're trying to put the logic out there and sort of play all the chess pieces, you could, you could run this in 47 different directions, and have a really good reason for all of it. I just feel uncomfortable appointing someone in the middle of the election cycle. That's all. That's kind of what I said. Okay, great, go.
I agree that it is a sticky situation. It's an unusual situation, and good food for thought up here. I would like to make a motion, though. I really don't want to put the city at risk for a minimum of $10,000, and upwards of what, we don't know what that cost could be. And I also don't want the city to go at least, you know, five, six months, maybe more, without a full council. So with that, I move that we move forward with an appointment process for the fifth council seat.
I'll second the motion.
For this, yeah, guidelines. So I have a first, have a motion and a second. So, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, so three ayes. Opposed? All right, motion carries. So thank you for the good discussion, and we look forward to the selection cycle.
So, just to clarify, with that, city staff, well, as if Regina didn't have enough to do, will begin advertising for the vacancy, to get potential candidates.
Yes, with a schedule that is noted in our agenda. Thank you so much. All right. Item 12.3, that's a long one, I'm not going to read this.
Thank you.
Mr. Revaz?
Or...
Rebecca, or Rebecca, sorry. Good evening, Rebecca.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas, Vice Mayor Acuna, and council members. The item before you this evening is for the approval of two program supplement agreements as a requirement of the funding sources on this project, and Amendment Number Three with REY Engineers, as well as a Measure L budget appropriation for the project. Amendment Number Three to REY's contract includes evaluation of additional potential utility conflicts, and assessment of the conditions of the storm drain facilities and sewer laterals, as directed by city public works and engineering staff together. The Measure HL Committee did recommend the proposed budget appropriation before you this evening, at their May 17, 2018 meeting, as part of the 2018-2019 fiscal year budget recommendations by staff. Staff's recommendations are summarized in the report before you this evening, and that concludes my verbal report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you so much. Any questions for staff?
This project just moves on, step by step.
That's right, and that's good to see. All right. I'd like to open it up for the public. Does anyone, a member of the public, wish to comment on this item? All right, I'll bring it back, and I would like Sue Rodman, I'd like to read her response to item 12.3. She says, "I am especially happy to see the needed sewer line improvements included. This is an appropriate and excellent use of Measure L Fund's yay engineering team." And since she is on the Measure L Committee, would like to make her comments noted. So, with that, do I have a motion, or any further?
I'll move it. Second.
Motion moved and seconded. Motion moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Barelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor Thomas?
Aye. Nice to see that moving forward. All right. Item 12.4, and with this, we are ratifying a task, task order with REY engineers and a budget appropriation for Western Placerville Interchange Phase 2.2 project. Ms. Neves?
Thank you. The proposed item does ratify task order number one for design level survey services for the Western Placerville Interchange's Phase 2.2 project, and approves a budget appropriation of the $25,000 from the Traffic Impact Mitigation Fund. This is the first item to be brought before you to move the project forward on the eastbound on-ramp at Ray Lawyer Drive as part of the Western Placerville Interchange's overall project. The city submitted an application for the local partnership program for project funding of the on-ramp and was selected to receive $1,070,000. This program is the competitive funding source to Senate Bill One, also known as the gas tax. At the August meeting, El Dorado Transportation Commission, the commission programmed $200,000 in highway improvement program funds for the project as part of the one-to-one match requirement for the LPP funding source. As the project advances into delivery, the topographic survey of the project vicinity needs to be updated with current information. This item does propose a task order to REY engineers for the survey, for those survey services under the city engineering on-call list for such work, and it will be tracked and billed under a standalone Western Placerville Interchange's 2.2 project. Staff's recommendations are summarized in the report before you this evening, and that concludes my verbal report. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
And your verbal report doesn't do justice to the hours of work that has gotten us here tonight, and I know you have, our city, full city staff and engineering staff has been working mightily with agencies, with the Transportation Commission, with California Transportation Commission to make this possible, and...
Thank you, it's a shout-out to the whole team, and actually, I want to give a shout-out to the chief and his amazing officers for assisting us the other day on our survey data work. Much appreciated, sir.
Wonderful, yeah, appreciate all the collaboration. I also appreciate the map included in this evening's item. That was, that was really helpful to, to read the agenda item and see the map and really understand what we're talking about, so, thank you so much. Any council questions or comments at this point?
I'll have one after you.
Pardon?
I'll have one just a moment.
Open public comment on this item. Any member of the public wish to comment on this item? All right, seeing that, I'll bring it back to the council for discussion and action.
Vice Mayor Acuna?
Our city in here, thank you, Madam Mayor. Rebecca, I see we're gonna, we're gonna be calling this 2.2, and that'll be our eastbound ramp, and that is most excellent. There is, there has been some concern about this project, and earlier this evening, it was mentioned that the large number of native plants that are going to be replanted once we move along. Is there not a significant tree mitigation, a replanting that is also required with the native oaks and pines that were removed? And if we could get that information for the public, maybe the next, when you do your next update on the existing projects, I don't think people realize that there, the city has a responsibility to mitigate what we had to remove.
That's correct. We will be assessing the vegetation that's out there, that's actually part of the biological assessment process towards getting the construction permits, and at that time, we will have an idea as to what the mitigation effort would be.
Okay, isn't it like a five-to-one ratio or three-to-one?
It's not that high, it's about three-to-one, it depends upon the permit, because they all have different requirements and ratios, and they assess different attributes.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you.
It would be fun, and I've actually did, done this a little bit, there's archives out there. If you look at what the town looked like when they built the freeway, and especially that area, now, there wasn't, there wasn't the overcrossing there, but when they put in Western, well, the Placerville Drive interchange and they built the freeway through that part of town, it looked just like it does right now, because you tear everything up, and then fifty years later, and even sooner than that, because, you know, I started coming to town about ten or twelve years after the freeway was built, and it kind of has looked exactly like it looks right now. There's, you know, you have these pioneering species, the live oaks and, and the various sundry bushes and shrubs that come in, and they come into disturbed earth real fast. I mean...
They grow quickly.
They grow real, anybody that owns a piece of land around here knows that they'll come right in. In fact, if you disturb a piece of earth, you'll get, like, the next season, you'll start to get the live oaks and cedars, they'll all just start coming up, because this is their environment. So, even if we didn't do anything, it would eventually look like it did before the project started. Now, I understand the public's concern, it's a messy thing, you know, it just, it looks like heck.
The end product is...
Yeah, it looks like heck, but it's, it's okay, you know, I think it's fine.
Appropriate mitigation.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we adopt the resolution one and two.
Thank you so much. So moved and seconded. All of those, oops, no, 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 no. Roll call, please.
Yeah, we're spending money.
Vice Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Barelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor Thomas?
Aye. And once again, would like to acknowledge staff's extraordinary work to make sure this is a complete project and finding the funds to build the eastbound on-ramp on and completing that interchange. That is just remarkable, so well done.
I'd like to thank all those same staffers on this side for their work yesterday. They were all in attendance, they were all participants, we, you know, again, this, this team provided the answers
Our city staff is amazing.
For Caltrans' project.
And can we turn the air conditioning down just a tad? It's a little, it's a little chilly in here.
It's cold, we're freezing.
Thank you, Steve.
No, we're not.
Okay.
It has been so hot.
I had a, I had a council member request. Okay. Item 12.5, adopt a resolution, retroactively approving a MOU between the city and the county sheriff's office, and we are going to poll items two and three, they are no longer necessary, and...
Excuse me, items three and four.
Oh, pardon me.
One and two are necessary, three and four are no longer necessary, and the chief will explain that.
Thank you so much, sorry, Chief Ortega.
That's okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, so items three and four will be polled simply because of some news that occurred yesterday. One of our newest police officers unexpectedly resigned, and I won't go into the reasons here, but what that did is create a vacancy, so we don't need to request the appointment of a temporary police officer position, so that...
Okay, sorry to hear that.
Yeah, it was a double-edged sword, but it made this presentation change a little bit, and it did happen. I apologize, after the agendas were obviously submitted late last week.
These things happen, no problem.
So, you'll recall earlier this year, the council approved that we would have a temporary contract memo, memorandum of understanding with the sheriff's department to provide dispatch services only at night, basically from seven PM to seven AM, until we could hire enough dispatch records technicians to fill those positions. We have not had good success in our training and recruitment until we changed our process in May. Since the beginning of the year, we've hired three candidates, two of which resigned for reasons I won't discuss here. One is almost finalized, though. So, with that one that will be finalized, and the possible temporary use of this police officer may or may not be needed, we'll be able to take back our complete night watch dispatch in November. One of the good things that's come about our new recruiting process is we're using a industry-standard item called Critical. It's a thing that we bought. But as luck would have it, two of the candidates that we have recently attracted are both previously served dispatchers, one for a major metropolitan police department here in California, and the other one for a regional police department, and they're gonna, they want to come here and work. So, their training would be cut down substantially from approximately six months to maybe two or three months, especially the one from the Bay Area that, I won't say which agency we're taking her from, but she has a lot of experience. So with that, I would need to extend this contract into November, and with your approval, we can get through this rough spot and get our dispatch back on track at night, and everybody will be much happier, including our officers, and I know our public will be happy to. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about this.
Looking forward to that, yeah, getting it back into the House, but sure, appreciate the sheriff's office for willing to work with us.
Yes, if I can, I'll just, I'll echo that, they have been very gracious, and Sheriff Diagostini's team has been phenomenal in helping us get through this, this process, so...
Appreciate our neighboring agencies.
I gotta buy him lunch again, I'm sure.
Absolutely. All right, any council comments or questions at this point?
Not at this point.
No? All right. Open the public comment on this side. All closed public comment on this side, and bring it back to the council for directions.
I just commented, and I think the chief knows this, that the, the difference between these calls, and we had several people in the audience this evening, when they call into our regular dispatchers, they can get that office, that information just goes through the system so much smoother. And, yeah, we can't be there in two or three minutes, and I don't, I defy any department, well, we can sometimes be there in thirty seconds if we're in the right spot. But, you know, to address some of the concerns earlier this evening, it's crucial to have our own folks dispatching our officers. I appreciate your efforts in this and attracting from wherever you have to get the quality folks. This is a tough job that I couldn't handle the stress, but it's, my hat's off to you and all of your officers. So, thank you. With that, I'd make a motion to approve the item.
I'll second it.
All right, and roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Barelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor Thomas?
Aye, great, thank you so much. And this next item, 12.6, is a pilot program. We are working on, the item before us is to approve and direct staff to place temporary signage on designated city streets during the months of September through November to address traffic congestion during Apple Hill season. Mr. Morris?
Thank you, Mayor and council. This came up in discussion with, actually, Councilmember Acuna is something that we may, may want to consider. As you know, in the, in this area, Mosquito Road and Mosquito, Clay Street, Coleman Road, all of these areas are heavily impacted during the Apple Hill season due to the traffic that tries to get off the freeway and cut through and hopefully speed up their, their trip, which generally I've found that it does not speed up their trip. But, so we, we looked at this, and so, are there some things we could do? So we looked at potentially some temporary signage, and you have listed here several locations that we would look at potentially putting this signage up. As you can see from the staff report, the signs would be business and local traffic only, no through traffic, and it would be placed at these locations, Carson Road and Dimity Lane, that would be from both directions to let people know not to go down Dimity Lane to, to Mosquito. The next one is at Highway 50 and Mosquito Road. This proposed location would be pending Caltrans approval, because this would be proposed to be in, actually, on Highway 50 to discourage people from getting off onto Mosquito Road. The next one is at the bottom of the off-ramp, that same location, but at the bottom of the off-ramp, so that when people, if they do get off, still say, "Well, I'm still going to go this way," we want to encourage them to the business, go and move towards the business district, not up into our residential neighborhoods. So we would say, "Don't go up Mosquito Road, go under the freeway and down towards Main Street and Broadway." The next one is at Mosquito and Clay Street, again, from both directions is our recommendation, encouraging people, "Don't go up Clay Street, this is not a good way to go. Go back down the other way, either get back on the freeway or get, go down Main Street." Again, same language. And then the last location, proposed location would be Clay Street and Coleman, which is one that connects over to get to Bedford. And then, again, do you, where do you go from Bedford? There's all other, Spring Street, et cetera, that could happen, so there's all kinds of different options there, but it does really, as, if you've been over Coleman, it's a very narrow road and not, not a good road to get a lot of traffic on. So, that's, that's the purpose of this item. We could, it's up to the council if you want to look at eliminating certain areas of these signs, adding to those. I've noted in here that this is not a budgeted item. We estimate the cost per sign is about $125 to make the...
What is the size?
Steve, did you, is that the thirty-six?
Yeah, they're intended to fit on a barricade.
Thirty-six by thirty-six?
Approximately, yeah.
Yeah, approximately.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you so much, and I apologize.
No more questions, yeah, or no more answers, sorry.
I think we've gotten to a point of no return in our city during Apple Hill season, especially, whereas we all know our, our city, our neighborhood roads are impacted to such a severe level with traffic counts that were never, ever meant to go on those roads, and, you know, and local traffic not able to navigate our own city. And worse, those huge traffic numbers are impacting our law enforcement, our safety personnel's ability to respond to emergencies within our community, and it's, it's just a real challenge. As we, you know, saw from our city engineer that traffic swells up to seventy thousand cars on a weekend, and with traffic apps feeding people into our city streets, a lot of that traffic is diverted. So, the thought is to, let's try this, you know, it, it won't keep everyone off our cities, our interior residential neighborhoods, but it may take, you know, some of the load off. I think we, we're going to work with pushing this information to traffic apps. Don't know how effective that will be, but letting Waze and Google Maps and all those know that, you know, the, the streets are closed to through traffic. We'll, we'll see how that works, and we're going to test it to see if this is an answer for the really congested, congested months of our city. So, any council member questions or comments?
My only comment is, I, I really, I see the need for signs, and I approve of it wholeheartedly, but I don't think that this sign is forceful enough.
Okay, what would you say?
I don't know. I, I really, I don't know, I would, I honestly don't know, but I just don't think that this is gonna do the trick. I think people are just gonna bypass it.
We did talk about no through traffic, as Mark and I were meeting this morning with Clay, no through traffic, making that bigger and bolder in caps.
Either that, or I don't know if we could make, if we could make it look more law enforcement.
He's a stop sign maker.
We put Chief Ortega's picture on there.
I'm looking at the chief to see if maybe he's got, if he knows kind of what I'm talking about, if there's anything out there that could be a little...
With that look on his face, that'd stop people from driving anywhere in the city, right there, just kind of get that, like, scowl going.
You know, we've talked about this among ourselves, and I got here kind of at the beginning of last Apple Hills, Apple Hill season, and they're just, I've talked to the CHP commander on how to possibly mitigate this through our city. I think the solution that you have proposed is, is one of the better ones. I haven't seen anything better, other than to forcibly close streets off completely, which is not practical,
No.
Because the locals still need to get around, so...
Unless you could get the word to the locals that they, you know, that this does not pertain to them. But, no, what I was wondering is if, do you have any wording that might be a little bit more, grab their attention? In other words, what if we put something up like a fine, or, I mean, you know, even though we're not going to do it, but if we could...
Your lawyer, your lawyer just sat very much in your office seat.
I will tell the council that I don't recommend threats or anything like that.
Can we lie?
I think we're lying right now, actually, to be honest with you.
I don't know, I, I just, like I say, I'm, I'm all for signs, but I just, I wish we could think it's a little bit more forceful wording.
You know, if it, if it takes a percentage of the traffic out, though, that'll be a pretty good relief to a lot of those neighbors. So if you could shave twenty percent, so you get one-fifth less traffic.
Well, that's, that's a, that's a possibility, too.
Yeah, so, you know, it would help. I'm still, and I've said this for a long time, I think we should have signs, I think we should get together with Caltrans and have signs out on the freeway and telling people how long it takes to get through town.
Like they're doing for Apple Hill?
No, like saying, "If you're here, it takes twenty minutes to get through the lights," you know, informing them how long it gets. I know, Waze does that, I mean, if you look at your, if you're driving and looking at your phone, which is illegal, it'll tell you, "This route takes an extra six minutes or seven minutes," whatever. But I think having a changeable message sign up there that actually said, "From this point to Canal Street is, or through the three lights is twenty minutes." And that, and, now, if you wanted to get to some creative thinking, you could say, have another one that says, "And if you go off into town, it takes the rest of your day."
Yeah.
You know, I mean, you could do that. I mean, now, you have to be careful, because there'll be folks that say, "Hey, those people coming into town spend money," but my guess is the people that come into town that are having the, we're having a problem with, they're just driving through, they're not stopping, they're...
Well, I'm going to tell you, last, and I was, last Sunday, you know, we had Main Street closed, and it was the most, I, I don't think that I've ever seen such a congested, it was horrible. Nobody was getting anywhere. It was just an absolute standstill.
Well, that's why I suggested we not allow that to happen.
And it was all the way up Cedar Ravine, it was Pacific Street, it was the entire, it was horrible.
I have, I have advocated that we stop doing that.
And I will also say that on this list, turning off at Bedford to go on to Spring, Spring Street, I come out tunnel, I counted twenty cars before I could get out.
I'd call the chief.
He couldn't help me.
He might be able to come pick you up.
But I'm saying that's another, you know, so, we could probably list all the, all the streets coming down Highway 50, you know, and...
Well, but I'm just saying, I think if you gave people information on the freeway, that this is how long it's going to get through town. I mean, there's a reason why when you're driving down to the Bay Area, or even driving up this way, there's a thing that says South of Daho, Placerville, you know, I mean, there's a reason why you're giving information to people. And I've said that I think that's the way to, I think this will be an interesting experiment, and I'm willing to fund it.
We can certainly...
But I think we need to deal with Caltrans and say, "Listen, we need some signs out there that say, this is how long it gets to, takes it to get through town."
I wanted to put, I proposed years ago, putting up Burma Shave signs with jokes on them, so that people could read it and telling them that we agree with their frustrations and bear with us, and you'll, you know, get there, good.
Burma who?
Vice Mayor Acuna?
Well, I appreciate the staff's efforts on this, and since dollars are scarce, believe it or not.
I don't think so.
I want to make sure that we get the wording on these signs.
I don't think so.
The biggest bang for our buck, and I know it's got to be, it's got that two, you get that quarter-second memory factor moving around there. Does, does the chief, does our city engineer, do you feel like this is the wording we want? Because I, I'd hate to put them, spend a thousand dollars for these signs and have somebody go, "Oh, man, you should have said this."
Well, that's why I was asking about the wording, because I, you know...
Because we're not going to get this money again. This took two years.
I think that the suggestions that were made on the revision... I think that the suggestions that were made on the revisions to the signs, could certainly be considered. I want to echo Mayor Thomas's comment that this is a pilot project. And, you know, as far as the investment on it, it is humbly mild compared to, I think, the positive impact. You know, signage really does help with detours and rerouting traffic. So I think this is a forward movement in a positive direction.
Do you think that when the, the people, I mean, obviously to get to these roads, they have to turn off Highway 50. So are they, they're going to turn around and come back and try to get back in that traffic? Is, how-
At least the on-road at Mosquito will be functional, so.
Are we, you know, that's an-
It's a challenge, it's a challenge.
That's an interesting question. Do we, the unintended consequences is a bunch of people flipping UEs on the street. And I mean, yeah.
There's no good option here.
I think we keep them on the freeway. I think that's the option.
Because if they get off the freeway, they're not going to say, oh, well.
And that's why that, the sign on Highway 50 is critical.
That's why staff has put them the way they've done it.
Yeah.
And we'll work with, with Caltrans to keep them on the-
It needs to be on the freeway.
On the freeway, absolutely. We'll, we'll work with that.
Chief, any words of wisdom?
I'll defer to the city engineer on that. These, this wording here is probably the best you're going to get.
Okay. I would like no through traffic as big and bold as possible, in a, in a larger font than the rest of it.
Maybe in all caps.
So, with that, let's open up the community. Mac, you have anything to say on this? Okay, well, good night. Let's open up the community. Would anyone like to weigh in on these signs? Yes, come on down. Hi, Dolly.
She's been-
Hello, Dolly.
Hi, Dolly Waeger. Mayor Thomas, council people, thank you for addressing this. As Councilman Borelli said, last Sunday, I can tell you, it took me 22 minutes to get from Cedar Ravine and Sacramento to where I could turn on to Highway 50. Twenty-two minutes. I forgot about the antique fair and I was trying to go to Rayleigh's, so I didn't turn on Sacramento and didn't realize 22 minutes later, I was there. All we can do is the best that we can do. I think this is a great idea. Let's see how it works. I would ask you to look at also extending it to possibly Christmas trees. Because when the Christmas trees start being sold, there's also a backup for that as well. So I don't know if we've any, done any studies on that traffic, but if we've got the signs, we might want to take a look at that and utilize it for that as well.
Could always put them up, yeah.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you for sitting through to the end of this item. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Terry Kayes, I forgot to say earlier that I live up near Camino. Apologize for that. And I always want to try to minimize my comments here, because I'm not a resident in Placerville. But I will say this, that throughout my career, I drove 50,000 to 60,000 miles in every state in the Union, under all different kinds of conditions. The kind of sign you want to put up is the kind of sign that drivers from almost anywhere will recognize as being something that's official. It shouldn't be too outlandish. For example, as part of a marketing attempt, it should be plain and simple, black and yellow, a kind of a sign in the same color schemes that are used nationwide for warning signs and so forth. And I also like to tell stories, since I'm sure you all read Winnie the Pooh, there was a really good name, a name for a sign, Trespassers Will. It was, part of the sign was missing. So we can't say, you know, trespassers will be shot, but-
Probably not.
But I, I would also, I would concur that no through traffic is probably about as good as you're going to get. And because that's something that a lot of people are going to, they'll understand what it means, because it's a standard designation. And in these kinds of things, the more standardized you can be, that somebody who's driving here from Oregon, or the Bay Area, or wherever it is, you don't want to get cute with it. Keep it plain and simple. Thank you very much for your time.
Great, thank you, Terry. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Alright, we'll close public comment and bring this back to the council for action.
I'll move.
I'll second. I will second this. Sorry. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor Thomas?
Aye. Look forward to testing this out. Yes, hopefully it'll make an impact to our city and less of an impact in our residential neighborhoods. Alright. Council reports from other agencies already? Who knew?
Wait a second.
At this time. Oh, yes.
Did you skip 15? Or do we do that before 15s?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
No problem. Any council agency meetings? Transit?
No meeting.
Where they were meeting Thursday, Thursday Transportation. LAFCO?
LAFCO, things will be getting interesting next month, because we are having a LAFCO workshop with all the fire districts invited.
Oh.
And the talk of consolidation and what LAFCO's role would be in that process.
Wow.
So Jose is working up several presentations. He anticipates a three to four hour meeting.
Wow, that's a hot topic.
So it will be, yeah, with all the firefighters.
Sorry, sorry, I couldn't resist. It's late, I couldn't resist. Sorry. It's an important topic.
It will be an important issue. So we've been kind of getting prepared for that.
Well, thank you for your service on that. Appreciate that. SEACOG, John?
Uh, we're gonna, I might miss the next Transportation Committee, Commission meeting, because SEACOG is actually convening folks about, you know, with the recent fire activity and the recent dead tree problem. And they've actually, they're convening a panel of folks that I actually want to really listen to and talk at. And so I may be going to that. And that's next week?
Thursday?
Just come on back in time for our employee appreciation barbecue.
Oh, no, I'll be doing that. It won't take that long. But I want to be part of that, because that's, as you know, it's a thing dear and dear to my heart. And that was it.
I do have to say, Councilmember Clarici, I just got an email from one of your fellow SEACOGians.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Councilmember Tom Stollard from, from Woodland.
Yes.
And he's saying your praises, saying what an effective representative you were for the city of Placerville, and what a good thinker and a brush of, breath of fresh air you were on SEACOG.
Wow.
So, why not?
John, could I ask you a question?
Wait a second, I want to bask in the glow. Tom's, like, nice things he said.
Well, I'm, I'm going to have you promote more wisdom here.
Okay, oh, God.
Um, last time you talked about that a civic lab is working to create commercial corridors-
Yes.
-throughout the region and will be accepting proposals.
Yeah.
Who are the, who-
That would go through staff and-
And are we doing it?
I, you'd have to, that actually is mentioned probably in the managers' meeting. I don't know where we-
Right, they, they've talked a little bit about it. They haven't actually come forward with any proposals.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure.
I think it's a huge, I think potentially it could be very good for this town and other small towns.
Right, right.
They tend to focus on like, you know, El Camino, you know, these, these big streets down that have all sorts of really funky stuff and were developed over a century and they're kind of a mess. But Placerville Drive and Broadway and even, it even applies, could even apply to Main Street, have developed over time and have some weirdnesses in them. And so the, the idea of being able to better utilize commercial zone and getting assistance with the, with, with some of the ideas around that, I think is really compelling. You have to come up with a proposal, but I think that's all happening, as they point out.
Okay, good.
So it's, it's an intriguing thing. Yeah, anyway.
Appreciate that. Councilmember Borelli, appreciate you bringing that up. Two by two, we have a meeting coming up in the next couple of weeks. Alright, requests for future agenda items. Anything? Alright. With that, we have the city manager and staff reports. And I know this was an item that was brought forward by Vice Mayor Acuna and just of having the, the staff and, or the, the council and the public have an opportunity to, to see all the good work that all of our departments are up to and respond to any trends that we may see. And I know this rec, is a tremendous amount of work perhaps for our departments. We appreciate the information. It was fascinating and I look forward to seeing these. So, department quarterly reports, Mr. Morris.
Yeah, these are for your information only. If there's questions you have, the department heads are here to answer them and we're willing to do that, so.
Alright.
Hopefully, hopefully this was not quite as time consuming as a previous effort?
It, it is making progress.
It looks to me like it's very time consuming.
We need to consider this more and more. And, and I, I think we actually pledged and failed, I think, to say, to go look through these things and actually say, this is important, this not, it's all important, but this is something that's very valuable. This maybe not so much. And kind of reducing the burden on staff to, to do that. And so, and I know we talked about it, because I think I even mentioned it, and then it just kind of, you know, didn't happen. But I think we still need to be vigilant about that. Because some of these are pretty lengthy and I imagine they did take time.
Do you want to address that, Vice Mayor Acuna?
Sure. And I would, Mayor Thomas and I discussed this earlier.
Oh, good.
And one thing I would encourage that the department heads is, even though these are public documents, and I know you go through the efforts of, you know, explaining your core operations and stuff, we really need to just see the numbers. I mean, there's all that information is in here. If it would help you in your lives to simplify these, and I'm sure, you know, the city manager can assist in cutting down the amount of effort that you have to put into this. There is valuable information here that I, you know, we get the statistics. There's some cities, for example, we'll use the chief's report, the second page, Calls for Service. They put that out every month, just like that. It has a little header on it, they update the numbers. We all know it's the police department, we know it's the calls for service type of a thing. So that would be great. I don't want you, I, I would be willing to reconsider having perhaps the staff do this three times a year rather than quarterly, to show some more respect for your strained workloads. But there is, again, this is all really good stuff. Anything that you can do to streamline it, I think would be perfectly acceptable, as long as we can show the activities that, and the important things. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I think we struggled with this the last time, because what is, you know, what exactly does that look like?
Yeah.
And not giving, and not, and not giving staff direction on what we think it looks like.
Well, and I, I think that it's important, especially around budget time.
Well, of course.
And so if we, I mean, not necessarily need to have this quarterly, maybe every six months, you know, interval.
I'd even be favored two times a year.
Two times a year.
Vice Mayor Acuna proposed three.
I see some nodding heads.
And I'm, I'm thinking, okay, so, you know, halfway through the year would be a pretty good-
Yeah.
You know, indicator of what's going on and help us to understand, you know, gosh, they're overburdened here, they're not, you know, and then, then when budget grows around, we understand a little, because we're prepared, you know. That's just-
Helps inform our decisions.
It, it helps inform, yeah, it does. And I think, that's just my-
I, I would like to highlight a few things, because the staff put enormous amount of work into this.
Absolutely.
Under the Development to Services Department, I think it's, it's important for folks to know that there's five divisions in that department, including building planning, engineering, code enforcement, and the Hangtown Creek Water Reclamation Facility. And I also want to note that 101 residential permits were issued with a total valuation of $2 million. And that included a total of $276,000 and some change in impact fees received to the city. So I think that's pretty amazing. And equally amazing, the Engineering Division is overseeing the engineering and implementation of 26 CIP projects totaling $54.9 million. And I think that is quite remarkable. And the Engineering Division is directly responsible for the delivery of 26 CIP projects totaling an estimated project cost of $47.5 million. So our Building Department and our Development Services Department is, they have an incredible amount of workload that they are working on and is making major-
I agree. And I, and I don't think the public really understands nor appreciates what our staff does, really.
That is so true.
And, you know, because you get snide comments about, you know, oh, what do they do, blah, 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 you know. It's like, okay, this really explains it. It just, you know.
And then, um-
I'm going to start carrying these around with me in my purse so that I can answer questions.
And then I'd like to make comment on the Community Services Department, which also has, I am in awe of the comprehensive scope of our Community Services Department. And Steve, your, this report doesn't quite do justice to the enormity of your workload. I think it's amazing that in the 2018 youth basketball season, that served, 775 youths participated in that. And that's amazing. I mean, what a service to the young people in our community. And all of the park and upkeep and the calls for service that our park staff and the facility staff responded to, and our public work staff. I mean, it's just, once again, a huge scope of work. So, in addition to our police department, their calls for service.
And I call attention to the City of Placerville Recreation and Parks Department, and they talk about all the programs that they offer. It's just phenomenal.
It's, it's amazing. So just extreme recognition to our entire staff and, and of course, our Finance Department, who keeps us all, all working with, with the money that we take in and take out, and, and writes the checks and keeps us all working. And then our administration that oversees all these functions. It's quite, quite remarkable, the dedicated staff we have. So, thank you.
I'd like to point out one thing with the, that the chief, the police department put out there. And the, some of the statistics on the back, because it speaks a little bit to, to the discussion we had earlier. And I think it can show how sometimes numbers don't tell a story, the complete story of things. Because if you looked at these numbers, you'd say, well, at least in the two years, and, and it might be held up, the previous years, well, there's no increase in crime. There's really none. I mean, if you look at the numbers, they're kind of static, they run a band. But it's obvious that there are parts of this town that get a lot more of this kind of thing, like Main Street, like Broadway, like even to some degree, Placerville Drive. And whereas the citizenry out there in the, kind of like living in the various residential neighborhoods around town, may not understand-
Right.
-that there's kind of a focusing of this thing down in the Commercial District, and certainly on Main Street, it seems like they have been getting a lot of it. And we heard about that. It's sometimes where numbers can be kind of deceiving, because you can say, oh, well, the numbers are, you know, we've, you know, there's been a slight increase in this and a small decrease in that, and they all kind of even out. But there's, obviously there's places in town that are getting a lot more impacts from the, the, the things that are happening. And we, we, you know, I, I'm going to, we, we don't lose sight of that. We know it, because we get the reports and we know what the police are doing. And we spend a lot of time in those parts of town and we know what's going on. But I think for the rest of the community, they might go, well, wait a second, all the numbers are kind of the same, and no one's broken into my house lately, so there is no crime. But there can be these pockets where it's, it's kind of focused. And I, you know, we can't lose sight of that.
Thank you.
Could I, I wanted, I wanted to ask the chief, your coffee with, with a cop, how is, how's that being received? Are people coming to, I'm thinking of these folks that came tonight. I wish they had come to the coffee with you.
Good point.
You know?
So the last one that we did was on a Saturday. This one here was last Friday. I'm sorry, the one before this was on a, a Saturday morning. This one that was just a week ago was on a Friday. So we're trying to get more weekend mornings in there as well. Because I realize people have kids to drop off and, you know, they have their weekday routine and they don't even have time to stop for even five or 10 minutes to talk to us.
Sure.
But they are well received. People come up and talk to us about a host of issues that, you know, we give them the time, including myself, the command staff, and the regular patrol officers. And we're happy to listen to them. And sometimes they just want to ask a question. Or, as one young man wanted to ask a couple of us, what does it take to get into law enforcement, those types of things?
Oh, well, that's a good one.
That, you know, that people just generally aren't going to come, they're not going to come to the police station and they might not take the time otherwise.
Sure.
And then on a few occasions, they do give us some, some intelligence that we discreetly use for our operations, and I'll just leave it at that. So they are, they are worthwhile. And we're really gracious, thankful for the coffee shops in the area. We move them around different locations to make sure that we spread the wealth, so to speak. So, does that answer your question?
Do they put signs in their, the coffee shops? Do they put signs in their window?
Yes.
I, I thought I had seen them and I, but I wondered if they all did, or if it was just one that-
And we start advertising them about two weeks out, so people start seeing them.
I know you do, I've seen them, yeah.
So, we do the best to get our word out. It makes it easy on social media.
The coffee with a cop at Centra last week was, was really, I thought, well attended and, and a lot of fun.
Good.
Sure appreciate you being out and accessible to the community. That's wonderful. Alright. Is the will of the council to have these reports semi-annually or three times a year?
Six months.
Six? Patty?
I think six is enough.
Mark? Three? No? Unfortunately, I think six, too. So, sorry.
It's okay, no problem.
So, twice a year. So, thank you so much, staff, for all your work in this. We, we really appreciate being informed.
Twice a year, I wouldn't even bother.
Twice a year, you wouldn't bother?
I wouldn't even bother if you're going to do it twice a year, because we have such a lengthy budget process, that, that, that uncovers so much stuff, that this, if you don't, if, I mean, there are, most cities do this monthly. Most cities have this stuff posted monthly, and they're not a whole lot bigger than us, okay? We have the issues